Hey, we're about to start. We're on. We're on life. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City Council and Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency meeting of Tuesday, October 5th, 2021. I now call the meeting to order. Now, please join me in standing for the National Anthem, which will be playing a video from a previous performance by mariachi Juvenil Harancia Michoacana. They are a great, a great mariachi band that's based right here in Costa Mesa on 19th Street is where they, and then after they, after we play that video, remain standing, and the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilmember Lauren Gamaros.
Oh, say, can you see that the dancerly light, what so bright the red at the twilight's last gleaming, whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous flight, oh, the rumble that we watched was so gallantly streaming, when the rocket's red glare, the dust burst in the air, gave proof in the night that a flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner wave, o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you very much. That was wonderful to our mariachis, and they're, the mariachis are on 19th Street, and they're from age 10 to 18. They also played in our concert in the park, and they were fantastic. So, okay, so now we're going to go on to the moment of solemn expression. It's now time for a moment of solemn expression led by Pastor Jordan Hanson from right over here, the Newport Mesa Church. Ms. Green, will you please take Pastor Hanson off mute so he can lead us in the moment of solemn expression?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the opportunity to offer this moment of solemn expression. Dear God, we thank you for the opportunity to live in Costa Mesa. We love our city. We all want to see its citizens thrive and experience wholeness. We want it to be a safe place for our kids to grow up and be proud of. Help us tonight as our City Council and Mayor lead the way in navigating our city through the challenging times that we face. Give us unique insight for creative solutions that would bring about community transformation for the good. And Father, I ask that you would help us to speak to each other in respectful and constructive ways. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much, Pastor Hanson. That was beautiful. City Clerk, would you please do the roll call?
Let the record reflect that all council is present.
The record will so reflect. We have three presentations tonight. The first is a proclamation for Hispanic Heritage Month. Hispanic Heritage Month in the United States runs from September 15th through October 15th. So, we're almost in the middle of Hispanic Heritage Month. The City of Costa Mesa celebrates the achievements and contributions of Hispanic and Latino Americans in our community. And we are very fortunate, right here on the dais, to have four members of our City Council who have Hispanic heritage. So, we have a proclamation, and I'm going to ask each one of them to read from it. Councilmember Reynolds is going to read the first and sixth recital. Councilmember Marr is going to read the second. Councilmember Gamaros is going to read the third and the fourth recital, and Councilmember Chavez will read the fifth. So, Councilmember Reynolds, you may begin.
Okay. Whereas, the Hispanic Heritage Observance began in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Lyndon and was expanded by President Ronald Reagan in 1988 to cover a 30-day period starting on September 15th and ending on October 15th. It was enacted into law on August 17th, 1988 on the approval of Public Law 100-402. And?
Whereas, each year, Americans across the United States observe National Hispanic Heritage Month by celebrating the histories, cultures, and contributions of Hispanics and Latinos in the United States, and those American citizens whose ancestry can be traced from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, Central America, and South America. And?
Whereas Hispanics and Latinos have deep roots in the city of Costa Mesa. And whereas residents of Hispanic and Latino origin represent 36% of the city's population. And?
Whereas, generation after generation, Hispanics and Latinos have enriched the Costa Mesa community through their resilience, spirit, vibrancy, leadership, investments, and entrepreneurship, advancing the many successes of our rich, diverse city. And?
Whereas, this year's 2021 Hispanic Heritage Month observance theme is Esperanza, a celebration of Hispanic heritage and hope. The theme provides us with the opportunity to celebrate and reflect on how great our tomorrow can be if we hold on to our resilience and hope. And?
I encourage all Costa Mesa residents to join me and the City Council in celebrating and observing this month by increasing their awareness of the valuable ways Hispanics and Latinos contribute to our city's prosperity, including by running for and being on our City Council. Now, as you may have noticed, it's Breast Cancer Awareness Month, so most of us are wearing pink. I actually have a pink tie that I bought for the occasion. Breast cancer does not care, so we have a proclamation, and we're going to provide it to Ms. Kristen Grimes in a moment, but breast cancer does not care about your age, ethnicity, or gender, if you live a healthy lifestyle or not, your race or socioeconomic status. This past year, the pandemic has disrupted breast cancer screenings and delays and diagnoses and treatments. There is a renewed urgency to schedule the recommended screenings before a cancer has spread and becomes less treatable. Reading excerpts from the proclamation that we're going to, that I'm going to present here on Zoom in a moment. Breast Cancer Awareness Month happens every year to raise awareness about the impact of breast cancer. As the second-leading cause of cancer deaths among women in the United States, an estimated one in eight women will develop cancer over the course of their lifetime. About 255,000 Americans are diagnosed with breast cancer each year in the United States. I encourage all Costa Mesa residents to join me as we raise awareness about the impact of breast cancer. Let us celebrate the survivors and remember those who have died of this terrible disease. Now, I'd like to recognize Ms. Kristen Grimes, who is on Zoom and is going to accept the proclamation virtually and say a few words.
Thank you so much. We are so grateful to the City of Costa Mesa and all of the council members for giving this proclamation. My name is Kristen Grime. I am with the American Cancer Society. We are an organization that saves lives, celebrates lives, and leads the fight for a world without cancer. And we are so excited to be kicking off this Breast Cancer Awareness Month this year. I want to encourage all of you to come out, wear your pink, bring all of your survivors to bring and raise support and awareness for breast cancer. We are hosting our Making Strides Against Breast Cancer Walk coming up on Sunday, October 24th. It's going to be at the Seegerstrom Performing Arts Center, right in your lovely hometown of Costa Mesa. And we are just encouraging everyone to come out and walk with us, raise awareness, and raise funds so that we can beat this horrible disease. I encourage all of the council members and the mayor to come out. We would love to have you be a part of it. You're already doing a fantastic job in wearing your pink ribbons and scarves, and I love to see it. So, we are so incredibly grateful for your support. We've been doing this event in the Costa Mesa area for over the last 10 years, and we love being a part of this community and giving back to the community in it. So, thank you so, so much for this proclamation. We're just so grateful.
Thank you very much for being on Zoom and for your words. And so, we have a surrogate, Mr. Minter, Director of Parks and Rec, who's going to accept the award here. And let's all go up and take a picture with our pink and our ribbons and everything like that and the proclamation.
Yes, please.
All right. Thank you to everybody for that. And our third proclamation and final proclamation of the night is for Fire Prevention Week. And we're so fortunate to be joined by members of Costa Mesa Fire and Rescue Department here today. We'll be calling them up in a bit. Fire Prevention Week is October 3rd through the 9th. This year's theme is Learn the Sounds of Fire Safety. 2021's theme is to help people understand about the sound of smoke alarms, the sound smoke alarms make, what those sounds mean, and how to respond to them. So, I'm going to read briefly excerpts of the proclamation, and then we're going to call Chief Stefano up to the podium to say a few words, and also to introduce other members of our Fire and Rescue Department, who we're very pleased and honored to have here in the chambers today. The City of Costa Mesa is committed to protecting and educating all those who live and visit Costa, live in and visit Costa Mesa. In 2019, residential fires killed more than 2,770 people in the United States, and three out of five home fire deaths occur in homes with no smoke alarms, or smoke alarms that failed to operate due to missing or disconnected batteries, or missing or non-functional power sources. Working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half. I urge all Costa Mesa residents to protect their family and home by testing all smoke and carbon monoxide alarms monthly to ensure all alarms are operational and to support the many public safety activities and efforts on Costa Mesa's fire and emergency services. So, Chief Stefano, would you please come up to the podium? And then we also have with us, we have a lot of members, I have listed here, Chief Stefano, Division Chief Pyle, Battalion Chief Chris Coats, Fire Marshal John Neal, and Fire Protection Specialist Brenda Emmerich. But, and we also have the Station Five crew. But could you just make sure that everybody gets mentioned? Thank you, Chief. Here, I'll get your podium mic on. There you go.
There we go. Well, thank you, Mayor Stevens, members of the council. Thank you for this opportunity, the proclamation. We appreciate it. Fire Prevention Week is something that takes place across the entire nation. We actually turn it into Fire Prevention Month, and we focus on fire and life safety and preparedness. And some of the key components you spoke about were smoke alarms being installed on every level of a home, in every bedroom. We also talk about testing the smoke alarms. When we go out to the schools with the team behind me, and we talk to the children and the teachers and the classrooms and the families, it's something everyone can do and be a part of. We also focus on emergency preparedness. October 21st is the Great Shakeout, which will be taking place, and it's a concerted effort with the city, police, and fire. And so, we'll be pushing that message out well. It's just a great opportunity to make sure that everyone has a plan for any emergency. When you're at home, when you're in the office, when you're at play, do you have a plan and that you practice it? And as simple as that may sound, it's something that's very important to heed and put the time into. But with it, with that, this is on behalf of the entire department. We just have some representatives, as you mentioned, our amazing Division Operations Chief Jason Pyle, our fire, yes, please. Fire Marshal John Neal. Battalion Chief Chris Coats, who happens to be sporting a very impressive mustache for Stashtober, which he might share with you. I don't. Our community education and outreach specialists like no other, who are uncertain just about every other community engagement that we run, Brenda Emmerich. And then just a snapshot of one of our crews. We have six crews on duty at the six fire stations every day, three different shifts. This is just one of them, an amazing crew at that. Captain Taylor Voss leads Engine 85 tonight. Engineer Travis Johnson. Firefighter Paramedic Lucas Anderson. And very appropriate, we finish with firefighter/paramedic Craig Bates. Historically, the fire department each year wears t-shirts supporting the pink for breast cancer. In recent years, we've jumped into the hat category, and firefighter/paramedic Craig Bates has jumped into hats. So, we have hats throughout the month that are our Costa Mesa Fire and Rescue with pink imprint. So, again, thank you for the opportunity to introduce just a snapshot of our incredible team, and thank you for the proclamation. We certainly appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Let's go, let's take a picture together. Let's go, let's take a picture together. Thanks for coming, Brenda. All right. That was very nice. Thank you, everybody, and council, and everybody who participated in all of those presentations. Now it's time for public comment. Public comments will be heard at this time. Public comment is for items that are not on the agenda, that are not on the agenda. You have three minutes to do public comment. We take public comment first from people who are in the chambers. Please line up at both podiums. We'll go from one to the other. And then, once everybody has expressed themselves who's in the chambers, then we'll go to the folks on Zoom, and they have three minutes as well. If you wish to raise your hand on Zoom, use the hand raise function, or you can push star nine, and then when you're called on to speak, push star six. So, looks like we have a few people in the chambers to speak to us. Ms. Martin, you have the floor.
Thank you. All of you have received a copy of Confessions of a Recovering Engineer. I'd like to give you a little history. Four years ago, the OC Active Transportation Forum, hosted by Michelle Martinez, who was at that time a Santa Ana Councilperson, met for a symposium in Santa Ana. My guess is some 100 city officials from all over the OC were there. Jim Kane and I, members of the BikeWay and Walkability Committee, were the only Costa Mesa people there. The keynote speaker was Chuck Marrone, founder and president of Strong Towns. Chuck blew me away. The afternoon session was a panel discussion of city leaders, such as Paul Martin from OCTA, and Corey Wilkerson, Active Transportation Coordinator for the city of Santa Ana. Marrone was the moderator. I left the meeting upbeat and inspired. I also, so to speak, fell in love with Chuck. So, when Chuck announced his weekend seminar again in Santa Ana in late 2019, I started rattling cages around here. Long story short, many of you who are sitting here at the podium attended that meeting. Chuck again was awesome. Well, good news. Chuck is coming back, this time to Costa Mesa itself, thanks to Arlis Reynolds. I am so excited, and he texted me yesterday, he's excited too. Just a blurb from Chuck's latest book. This is from the Advanced Uncorrected Proof, which I received in the mail from Strong Towns. I presented the profession's values in this way to dozens of audiences comprising thousands of people across North America. I asked them to identify their values. There are mixed audiences of professionals and non-professionals, people involved in local government decisions, and those who are not. There's always a broad consensus. The answer overwhelmingly, from people who shouted out at Chuck's, in Chuck's audiences, was safety. The safety is the top value nearly all people apply to street design. So, I urge you, please, read this book, and Chuck sent me an autographed copy as a gift yesterday. I love Chuck Marrone. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your comments. Sir, you have the floor.
My name is Ned McKeon, and I'm a longtime resident of Costa Mesa. Our pets are members of our families, and by way of illustrating, I want to call your attention to the fact that it took FEMA more than a few floods before it got the message. People would not evacuate their homes, even when rising water was forcing them onto their roofs. They would not go unless their pets came with them. FEMA has adjusted to this reality. Now rescue teams are trained and ready to take pets along with the people who are attached to them. That's an illustration of how we feel about our pets, and it's too bad Costa Mesa is so resistant to this message. You do have something called a coyote management plan. It's really a surrender to the notion that the coyote population will only get larger and more aggressive. Your plan recommends hazing. If coyotes could laugh, they would, at the people who've shaped tin cans full of pennies at them. The real purpose of this element in your plan is to absorb the energies, absorb the energies of the residents who want the coyote menace reduced. Instead, you have this plan which is designed to have these citizens run around in circles until they give up. The real answer to the growing coyote menace is to trap and euthanize them. I've heard the objection many times, but they'll just come back. Of course they will come back. Mow the lawn, and the grass will grow back. You'll never do it for the final time, but you have to keep at it. I don't pretend that coyotes will ever be gone, not when our neighbor cities are indulgent to, but coyotes are social animals. They will notice when one of their pack is missing, it's taken from them, and they will avoid the area. Costa Mesa is not isolated. It is big enough, at 16 square miles, for a new policy to have a noticeable effect, one that, one that will be possibly copied in our neighbor cities. Opponents of trapping say it won't work, or won't work in just one city. They're trying to hide their fear that it will work, and they don't want it ever to be tried. Coyotes in the wild are an admirable species. They have to watch their steps. They eat and can be eaten too. They have evolved in the wild as part of nature's plan. Coyotes in Costa Mesa are not part of that plan. They have no natural enemies and nothing to keep their numbers in check. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sir, you have the floor.
Good afternoon. My name is Richard Gibson. I'm a 15-year veteran and 25-year Department of Education retiree. I live at 115 Delmar Avenue, right behind Circle K. Seventeen years ago, I built those houses when they were just a shanty little cottages, and they were terribly. Since then, we've had a huge problem with vagrants. Even now, I have vagrants that have threatened me, my wife, throw trash in my yard, stole things out of my yard, bikes, recyclables, everything. This continually happens two, three, maybe four times every week. I have the police come out at least three times every week, and my neighbors also. I'm asking, when is this going to stop? Because you have an ordinance where there's no camping, but yet I see these guys sleeping out there all the time, and police just roll right on by. Isn't this ordinance supposed to be taken care of? What is there that can be done? Can you guys provide cameras, more police patrols? What can be done? Because I have pictures, like, almost 1,000 pictures of guys doing drugs where my kids are at, and my grandkids. And they're there, and they threaten me when I tell them, please, you gotta leave. You can't, you're trespassing. What can be done? So, you know, I'm asking you guys, you know, last year, the owner of the photography shop, Phil, he confronted some of the homeless, they broke his jaw, and ran away and got away with it. And nothing has been done. What can we do? You guys are doing a wonderful job at the airplane park. What can be done here at Circle K? The people who work at Circle K, they don't want to call the police because they say that if they call them too many times, they get their license taken away. So they don't do anything. They even allow them to steal and don't even call the police for stealing. So, I'm asking you guys, I'm pleading with you guys. I tried my best to do the best I can in building these houses that look very respectable for east side Costa Mesa. But these people are just tearing it down. They throw trash in my yard every day. What can be done? I'm pleading with you guys. Please do something. Thank you.
Sir, can you make sure to exchange information with Alex Gonzalez, and we'll follow up with you. The council members will follow up with you.
Thank you.
And Mayor, we'll have Assistant City Manager Susan Price also connect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, you have the floor.
Hi there. My name is Frank Clarkson. I'm a 20-year resident of Costa Mesa. I live over in Eastside. And since the time I've lived here, I've seen some problems escalate in our neighborhood that the city just does not take seriously. And that being the problem with the coyotes. They are a menace. You guys have had Coyote Awareness Month, where you've laid out the same plan that you've done for years, which is for us to run around away with our arms. You teach us about coyotes and all that stuff, which is wonderful. It really is. But it's not reducing the numbers of coyotes that we have in the neighborhood, and they are increasing. They're getting bigger, they're eating more pets. People cannot have their pets in their own yards. That's ridiculous. We need action, not lip service. I've been here for the last seven years, asking the same thing. The city needs to hire professional trappers and reduce their numbers. It's as simple as that. And I know it's a hard job, and it might even be a little bit expensive. But when you guys are confronted with a kid who's bitten to what degree I don't know, by a wild coyote, you're going to be in a mad scramble with lawyers and everything else, trying to mitigate the problem. Don't wait. It's pets now, but it's going to be a kid, and you're going to be confronted with this, and it's going to be on your watch. Take care of this problem. Do it ASAP. We watch all the time. On social media, big coyotes, as big as a German shepherd, people were saying. That's a, that's a big coyote. And they're not that big in the wild, but they're very big here in our urban areas. And we're an urban area. They're here because of us. They come, they're attracted by people and their refuse, and their pets. We have to protect ourselves. This is a city, it's a civic area, it's not a wild park, and if they're in the back bay, we can leave them alone. But when they come hunting in the neighborhoods, that's off limits, and it's gone on long enough. I'm asking for your action, again, to take care of this problem as soon as possible. And I want, I want to see some action. We have gotten lip service in all this for seven years, that I know of, and it's ridiculous. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ma'am, you have the floor.
Good evening. I'm glad we're able to come and speak directly to you again about this serious coyote problem terrorizing the neighborhoods, and the parks in this city and the surrounding cities. During the past year or so, we've sent you a few updates of incidents and photos of what's been happening, including pets killed. I think I sent several of, with coyotes, with cats in their mouth, just right around from this area and here. And incidents of confrontations with coyotes within the city limits and in the city parks, and people who've had to actually try and fight them off. And they, and they're, they don't, they don't scare easily. When we first came to you five years ago, we were told by city staff and all this, give us time. We need to collect data, we need to complete studies, we need to do a public awareness so that people would know, learn to remove attractants, and they'd learn to chase them away, with the intent of changing their behavior, changing the coyote's behavior in this. We gave you time, and you left us to our own defenses. The one thing that has been proven is that hazing, which is the cornerstone of all these plans, including the plan here in Costa Mesa, it doesn't work. And even the most recent studies by the coyote expert, Dr. Quinn, are reaching that conclusion. And after four years, she's finally coming to a lot of other conclusions too, like urban coyotes have a density of three or four times the density of coyotes in the wilderness. They're at least 10 pounds heavier than that average, than the average coyote. And some of the largest ones were found here in Costa Mesa. I mean, they even reported, they've got, have like coyotes that are up to 37 pounds here in this, in the city, here in Irvine, and maybe Serrano Palseri's and some of those other places. And she's also finding out that hazing doesn't work very well. They've learned, they've learned that we're an empty threat. They need a predator, and we can't, we're not, we can't beat it. And thank God, they've already dispelled that cockamamie theory of compensatory reproduction. You guys sat here in March 2019 and listened to that old guy from CDFW say that, you know, if you kill one of them, you know, the females pop out more and everything else. That theory has been disproven. What I want to say is, there needs to be a proactive effort to reduce their numbers, to reduce our risk. We know we're not going to get rid of all of them, we need to reduce the risk. Torrance has a plan, a program where they have a trapping season. It's between October and March, and it's not assigned to the police department, because otherwise, this is not a service call type thing. It needs to be a, an ongoing program, year after year, otherwise, we have to keep coming back to you year after year. But if you're taking care of it on an annual basis, then it keeps the numbers down and it keeps the risk down. The next thing is, you need to coordinate with this other cities. Now, you know one of the county supervisors, get her to do something about it, coordinating the cities. And the last one is, where's your annual report? I mean, it's October. And I mean, you guys, they should be cranking out these annual reports, and they're, they kind of do it whenever they feel like it. So, get your people to do that.
All right. Thank you. I don't see anybody else who's going to speak to us in the chambers. So, Madam Clerk, do we have anybody who wishes to address us in public comment on Zoom?
Yes, we do. Mr. Mayor, we have a number of speakers.
Good. Who's first?
The first one will be Henny Abraham.
Ms. Abraham, you have the floor.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes, loud and clear.
Perfect. I am calling on behalf of our wonderful Chamber of Commerce about the event that we have, the networking event that we have tomorrow night at Cafe Sevilla from 6 to 8. It's to honor Spanish, Hispanic Heritage Month, obviously, but also to honor and network with many of our small business owners who are of the Hispanic background. They are a huge asset to our community, and we would love for them to have a great turnout so we can, you know, market for them and advertise for them for their businesses so we can help them out. So that's tomorrow night at Cafe Sevilla. It's $10 for chamber members and 20 for non-members, 6 to 8, and as a complimentary dance lessons from 8 to 10, too. So it's a great event. Please sign up before the spots fill up. Thank you so much, and thank you for everything that you guys do.
Thank you. I'll be there. Who's next?
Call in user one, please.
Call in user one, you have the floor.
Thank you. Last council meeting, you had a presentation by Katie Calvota, and she was with, I believe it's called Advance OC, and she gave an equity report. And in this report, she focused on Costa Mesa as far as what we have achieved and how we were compared to other cities. And I was a little concerned about some of the numbers and some of the comparisons that were made, so I went back in to review this report. And I did find out that the process that they used was the MIT and the Harvard methodology to acquire all of the information. to acquire all of the information. And they use the areas of the census. So in doing this, there were a number of categories, but the category that I'm most concerned with, and I think every other resident in Costa Mesa is concerned with as well, is under the basic human needs, under personal safety. And under that section, we got a very large, underperforming red area. Now, underperforming in personal safety is certainly one of those areas that causes great concern. Now, one of the areas in our city received a 15.5. Now, figure that that's 15.5 out of 100. So the safety in that particular area, which I believe is bound by Adams Harbor, Placentia, and Wilson, that's a 15.5. Now, the highest that our city received was on the east side and it was the area that joins Newport Beach. And that area received the highest. However, the city of Irvine, lowest score is higher than our highest score. So safety is certainly an issue. And that prior caller that called regarding Circle K, I mean, that is evidence that we need to have some focus, some priorities given on areas. And in regards to his comment, you know, we have this $12 million shelter that we have and it evidently is operating wonderfully. And the purpose of having that shelter, one of the purposes was so that we could invoke and utilize the ordinance. And the east side had an event this week where at 4:00 AM, an intruder came into a house of a sleeping family. Now, the husband luckily woke up, chased him down the street, and the police were there quickly and he was in custody. But everybody is very aware of safety within the city. So I hope that the priorities, I hope our new chief can fix this.
Thank you, ma'am. Who's next on Zoom?
It's phone number ending in 698, please.
698, you have the floor.
Madam Clerk, Ms. Green, this is Stephen Chan. I sent you a three-minute video. Could you please play that and I will hang up here.
Yes, we're loading it.
Thank you so much.
Anything you're teaming provided shall not be audible beyond the area under control of the licensee. So that essentially means if I can hear any entertainment emanating from your facility outside of your footprint, that's a violation of the CUP.
Costa Mesa residents, stop Strut School Night Base. It runs until 2:00 AM. Five hours later, Smart and Final abuse commences. Check this guy out. Grabbing one pallet off of the stack to slam, then moves on. It's 6:59 AM. Sundays are grueling after three days of deep sleep deprivation. Better get that homework done. Strut Bar and Smart and Final in concert every Sunday afternoon. Visit any weather after a month of four days a week. It's illegal, sleepy Friday, low-frequency bass, and our soup kitchen neighborhood kids are having school attendance trouble. Strut Bar and Smart and Final are operating normally as a public nuisance. Please abate them using the California Unlawful Liquor Sales Abatement Law. This past spring, when Strut was COVID-closed, the city positioned a so-called expert behind the bar to measure sound spillage into backyards from Smart and Final across the parking lot. Last month, Smart and Final deployed a brand-new, gas-powered backup beeping forklift to do tasks that for years had been accomplished with EV lifts that didn't beep. There is no OSHA rule, either state or federal, that requires a backup beeper on a forklift, unless, that is, it's on a construction site. Costa Masons, is a construction site coming to your neighborhood? Let your city representative know that 4,000 affordable golf course homes on the golf practice area will allow Costa Mesa neighborhoods to organically develop. Stop the retrofit of high-density projects in your lower-density neighborhoods. Build more supply where it's needed in the affordable home category. Start figuring out who gets an affordable home on the Costa Mesa golf course. Stop the Smart and Final backup beeper on the forklift. Stop the joyriding. Costa Mesa residents, stop Strut School Night Base. Please abate these nuisances in the soup kitchen neighborhood.
I just want to make it clear that people in that community do not see this as a big issue.
Are you out of your mind? Two school nights a week? It's no surprise we were ranked dead last for personal safety in the county. Member Chavez, you're in denial. You should resign.
All right. Thank you. Who's next on Zoom?
Charlene Ashendorf, please.
Ms. Ashendorf, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Stevens, members of the city council. Charlene Ashendorf, Chair of the Cultural Arts Committee. In 1882, while writing a letter to his brother about accomplishments, Vincent Van Gogh shared that great things are done by a series of small things brought together with intention. Pushing through the pandemic, the Cultural Arts Committee has been creating a number of small acts that are not only elevating the arts, but artists in our community as well. And here are just a few small things. The committee continues to provide art grants. November 15th is the next deadline to submit applications. I'm encouraging artists, arts nonprofits, and schools seeking support for their art projects to visit the committee's Arts Grants webpage to apply. The committee is thrilled to announce that utility box number 55 has been installed at Superior and Industrial Way. Congratulations to local artist Sonia Tomorian. We are pleased that the city's three galleries are now open. The youth art gallery located in the city hall lobby features works from the Leap and Rocks program. Art on the Fifth presents works of Costa Mesa business owner, entrepreneur, and arts educator Karen Nguyen. And at the senior center, you'll find more than 20 pieces of the works of Costa Mesa's nationally-recognized artist Ronald Chee at this exhibit. Receptions to meet the artists are slated for mid-November. Coming soon, a new venture, a new virtual art venture. The call for artists is now open. Visit artventurecm.com to apply. All art venture in the time of COVID participating artists will be invited to the exciting and expanded in-person events slated for late 2022. The virtual art venture exhibit will be available to revisit and tour for a full year online beginning December 2021 through December 2022. The virtual opening reception is December 3rd at noon. And finally, recent Back Bay High School graduate and artist Valerie Maja's work has been selected for the entry wall of the Bridge Shelter. Installation will be occurring later this month. The voices of our committee, our artist community, and this council's vision for the arts are creating a more visibly enriched culture for Costa Mesa. Thank you so much for your support. We look forward to great things for the city of the arts in the future.
Thank you, Chair Ashendorf, and for all you do on the committee and otherwise for our community. Thank you very much. Who do we have next?
Mr. Mayor, there are no further speakers.
Oh, okay. Well, then we'll close public comment. And now is the time when we have council member committee reports, comments, and suggestions. And each council member gets four minutes to say whatever they have to say and report on things that they've done since our last meeting. And the first one we have up is Councilmember Chavez from District 4. Councilmember Chavez, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Stevens, and thank you, everyone in the audience, for joining us today. I'll begin with the big update from the oil spill that occurred this weekend. This Sunday, I joined Brother Foley in taking an aerial tour of the spillage of the oil field. I joined her out of fear that the oil would reach Fairview Park through the Santa River Trail. We've been very lucky so far that it's not gone that far deep. However, I do want to report that it has been moving southward quite a bit since Saturday. As of today, it is around Dana Port Harbor. Optimistically, it is not as dense as we originally feared. The tour we took was with U.S. Coast Guard Admiral Ruggel Or, and she was commenting that, at the very least, the oil is more stringy, therefore a bit easier to clean up, but we're still going to see the effects and implications of this horrible incident. Yesterday, I also toured the Tawbrick Marshes in Huntington Beach, and all three marshes, all 127 acres of them, have had oil impacts. Again, silver lining, we're very lucky that we're in the month in between the nesting season of the birds and the season where they migrate into that area. So it could have been worse. We're doing our best to be up to date on everything and give people resources. I know people want to be involved and want to do the best they can, and that's just the Orange County and Costa's pride we have. For those that do see animals that are oiled up, don't approach it. Please just call the Animal Services number, which is 877-823-6926. For those that want to volunteer, I understand the need and desire to serve, but for the time being, they're asking only volunteers that have experience dealing with hazardous waste. So if you're a regular layperson who wants to help out, I want to direct you to John Villa, who's the director of the Wetlands and Wildlife Care Center. He said to follow the ochhabitats.org website. Once they have a better understanding of the magnitude of the oil spill and they can bring in more laypeople, they'll put opportunities to volunteer there. So again, ochhabitats.org for those that want to volunteer and are not hazardous waste experts. And with that, I want to transition over to Costa Mesa proper. Couple of things happen, a couple of things will be happening next week for me. Call me on the docket. The first is I'm meeting next week with our Parks Inspector Jason Mentor to go over park expansions and park ideas for West Coast Mesa. As you guys know, one of the biggest things I care about in Costa Mesa is quality of life, and that includes trees and that includes open space. And we have some ideas on how to expand access without really revamping and changing to a Costa Mesa landscape. So I look forward to doing those ideas with Mr. Mentor and seeing how he can better improve West Coast Mesa lives. Secondly, there's going to be a parking study session next week on October 12th. I know in my district in particular, parking can be very hard to come by, so I encourage all residents who want to voice their opinions and to hear what's been done so far to alleviate parking, to come to that meeting and voice their concerns. It's a very important meeting, so please join. And as well, tomorrow, we have with the Chamber of Commerce, the Hispanic Heritage Month event at Cafe Sevilla at Triangle Square. I encourage everyone to go, even if they're not Hispanic or not a member of the Chamber of Commerce, because the chamber's been a great resource for me as I look for ways to partner with members of the community, and they've been a great liaison to encourage small businesses, also nonprofits, and members of the community to be involved and engaged. So please show up and attend. And finally, on a fun note, on Friday, I had the pleasure of joining Mayor Stevens, Councilmember Harlan, at the opening of a collage at Bloomingdale's. So Bloomingdale's in Taylor's Plaza took a portion of their store and actually put a food court into it. And it has a great variety of cuisine, has world-renowned Taiwanese and Chinese cuisine alongside some normal staples like broccie for chicken and waffles. So check it out. It's a really cool environment, really cool vibe, and it's really encouraging and engaging to see Bloomingdale's step forward and create more of experience for our residents here in Costa Mesa. Once again, if you have any questions regarding the oil spill, any questions at all, please feel free to email me at manuel@chavez@costasca.gov. O C to serve. And again, thank you all for being here today.
Thank you. Great job on that report. I appreciate it. Now, next up is from District 2, Councilmember Lauren Gamaros.
Oh, there you go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I want to go over a couple of things that I heard this evening and comment. For one, I'd like to give my support on mitigating the coyote problem that we have in our community. I have the same issues where I live in the Hillcrest neighborhood. I've actually had the coyotes jump my fence and scratch at my front door. Imagine that. More than once, I've even had neighbors tell me that I've had coyotes entering my property. So what I would like to say is, please reach out if you'd like to work on some sort of a solution. I'd be happy to support whatever we could do in working with the city to make sure we can try and mitigate this problem. Another thing I want to talk about, if anyone has an interest in a pet, we have local no-kill shelters that have a great variety of great animals, dogs, cats, bunnies. I think one of them even has a turtle right now. Please consider that. It's a great option versus trying to get one, say, from a pet store or something like that. We have local animals and they're great, great companions. Something else I would like to speak about is our homeless problem. Couple of statements were made regarding that. I would like to say that this community makes it a very high priority to ensure the safety of our citizens and neighbors and children in this community. I know that the police department supports trying to help this out. I know that staff works hard on this and I know that the fire department engages as well. But I would like to remind people that in some cases, homeless people are service-resistant. They don't want to be taken somewhere else, and there is no law against being homeless. Now, if they're breaking some sort of a law or they might need some sort of medical attention, of course, we want to be there to help, but we cannot force someone to move along just because they're standing somewhere that maybe we don't like. But I do support having a safe environment for our community, and I would work with anyone to help along with that. The last thing that I want to speak about is my heart goes out to all of the wildlife on our coastline right now due to the oil spill. And if there's anything that I can do, I would be the first one there to help. My family and I have spent many, many hours at the beach. I grew up in Costa Mesa. I grew up at the beach. It really hurts a lot to see what's going on right now in our local beaches. It affects a lot of cities right now. So if anyone has the ability to volunteer and it can be used somewhere, consider it. It's a great way to try and help mitigate that problem. So thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next up, from District 6, Councilmember Jeffrey Harlan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Costa Mesa. To the gentleman who appeared before us tonight talking about the Circle K, that's been a hotspot on the east side for as long as I've lived here. It's kind of ebbed and flowed. I did see Chief Lawrence go talk with him, so I do appreciate that. And I think you and I will talk about that a little bit more as we go through other areas of the east side that need some attention, but just want to keep that on our radar. I do want to note tomorrow is National Walk to School Day. I believe there are 13 Costa Mesa schools that are participating, including two on the east side, Kaiser and Willden Elementary. The meeting point for that tomorrow is Lindbergh Park at 7:30. And it happens tomorrow as well as next week. I think there are a handful of schools that are doing it on the 6th, I'm sorry, 6th and the 13th. I want to thank staff again for organizing and participating in our strategic planning workshop last Monday. That was a really great event, a great way to start the week. And I certainly got a lot out of it personally. I do want to note for the public that we added a council goal, which was to advance environmental sustainability and climate resiliency. I think that's an important issue, not just for the council, but for the community. A number of us have heard that repeatedly. We want to focus on environmental efforts as well as how it impacts our economy. And unfortunately, you know, that's now brought to the forefront with this oil spill, which, you know, there's no other way to characterize it other than a catastrophe. And I've been fielding calls and emails from folks throughout my district and elsewhere, especially people in the surf community who are just livid over this, not having access to the beach and seeing what really sustains them here being taken away. And as my fellow council members have pointed out, it's a very sobering situation, and we need to do better. And so I know that this council is going to be committed to environmental issues. I'm glad we're actually focusing on that in a formal way, but this just seems to highlight the urgency of the situation. I think that's all I have for now. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next up is from District 1. Next up is from District One, Councilmember Donald Harper.
Thanks, Mayor Stevens. With regard to the coyotes, you know, I tell my wife, try and make them your friends because they're in our yards, they're all over. It can be scary if you have small children. I do appreciate it, and Lauren, if you want to work together on that, I'd be happy to support you. And I'd love to see the study or the program from the City of Torrance. If that lady can send it to us, we can get some information on that, if they've got a way to do it. Because I've had in the last couple of weeks, several texts, and I've had several emails, which is kind of extraordinary. They seem to come and go, I think. Sometimes I won't see them, and then I've been stalked by them. They've come very close to our house and our back patio, so I think everybody feels that. The harsh reality is if you have to move them or kill them, and I don't think killing them is an option or allowed. So that's not going to work. With regard to Circle K and the theft at Circle K, Lorianne, I'd like you to speak to something when I'm done, when it's your turn. I think it's Prop 47 that allows you to steal up to $950, and it's just a misdemeanor. And I spoke to some large retailers, someone that manages a large retailer here in Costa Mesa. I'm not going to give the name. They have security guards, and their security guards are instructed when people steal to look the other way or ask them to pay for it, but not do anything about it. So, Lorianne, what I'd like to know is what kind of calls we get, and then what our police department can and cannot do and how we impact. Because when you tell that story to a voter or a citizen of Costa Mesa, they're all just shocked that that's true. But I think it creates an environment where it encourages theft, and it creates an unsafe environment for our community. So I'd like to know about that. And then in the last 30 days, I've had three of the, I have four direct reports, four executives, and three of them asked if they can move out of California and work from out of California. And they're saying their parents with kids that are K through 12, and they're asking that because they don't want to be subject to mask mandates for their children or vaccine mandates. And in the last few days, now, those people live outside Costa Mesa, but in the last few days, I've been approached by constituents who are parents with children in Costa Mesa school districts expressing their distress over the recent mandate announcement by Governor Newsom. Governor Newsom announced that California would be the first state to mandate COVID-19 for vaccine for K through 12 in order to attend school in person. And I know that that comes into play once that vaccine is approved by the FDA. We're waiting on that, so that won't come into play until that occurs. But this isn't a debate over the vaccine's role in society. It's parents expressing their anger over the ability to make medical decisions for their own children together with their doctor. It's a very personal thing. And with no long-term safety studies for COVID-19, vaccines may present a very different risk, and we don't understand. As a parent, I have older children. They don't do what I ask them to do anyway. But as a parent or a small child, I can certainly empathize with it. And I do believe it's a child's right to attend a school in person, and it's something that's critical to our society. So for Costa Mesa parents and caregivers who want the right to choose and deserve the right to choose with their sacred relationship with their doctor, I do believe it's, as a leadership here in the city of Costa Mesa, I'm going to support them and I'll stand by them. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next up is from District Five, Councilmember Reynolds.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I feel like I've been waiting a couple of weeks to say thank you to our staff for the amazing presentation that you gave in our council meeting a couple of weeks ago. I think we were all, you know, saw a long agenda ahead of us and didn't want to take time. I could get the sense that we were all just sort of holding back because we wanted to move forward on the agenda. So I want to thank you for that presentation. I've heard really wonderful response from the community who was able to watch that during our meeting or watch the video post afterwards. Just really proud of all of the work that you guys have been doing through very difficult couple of years. So thank you for that. Sorry for waiting two weeks to give it to you, but I wanted to give it to you in public in addition to in private. And I also want to thank the staff that helped put together the District Five Community Forum last week. That was a really nice sort of follow-up to that larger presentation, really focusing in on some of the things we've been working on in District Five. And Assistant City Manager Susan Price had this sort of new model for a community forum where we do very short presentations from staff, followed by some mingling in booths, and there was really good response on that as well. So I think it's a really nice model for more local community forums that we could do throughout the city in the future. So thank you for putting that together to all of the staff members who worked on that. Want to thank staff also. We've talked about Hispanic Heritage Month and the value and importance of that to our city. I just saw the video of Ivan Calderon's Taco Mesa and a little bit of that history, and I just really appreciate all of the creativity that's gone into Hispanic Heritage Month as we build on it every year since we started a few years ago. Really meaningful to the community. We're getting good feedback on that as well. And one more thank you to the Orange County Soccer Club, who has donated, they're celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month on Wednesday next week, October 13th. They've donated 120 tickets to our children at SOI and the Wilson Street Learning Center to attend that game. They've invited our favorite youth mariachi group to play the National Anthem ahead of that game on October 13th. And I'll share this after the meeting. They've given us a link for discounted tickets for city staff. So you introduced us to our new electric bus. Maybe you guys could get some tickets and take the electric bus down to the stadium on Wednesday next week. That'll be available for all staff and council and other committee members. A couple updates. We've heard that tomorrow is a big day. There's a lot going on. Walk to School Day is a really exciting event, and I'm so excited to see 13 schools participating this year. It is also Clean Air Day, and probably one of the best ways to celebrate Clean Air Day is to replace a driving trip with a walking trip. So I encourage everyone to try to do that, whether you're walking to school or to work or to the grocery store or the bar after work. Try to get out and walk a little bit more tomorrow in honor of Clean Air Day. I want to touch briefly on the safety issue. I was also intrigued and concerned by some of the safety scores we heard last council meeting, and we had a chance to take a quick glance into it. And my understanding is that much of that score is actually driven by road safety and collisions. We have a lot of freeways, state highways going through our city, lots of collisions. We'll hear in our local road safety plan analysis that the number of collisions in our city and some of the safety issues related to that, not all in our control. But because of that, I'm really glad that we are continuing to keep road safety as a strategic objective that we're working on, continuing to work on. And I appreciate all of staff's attention to that. Happy update, and maybe related to the oil spill, preservation of land, reduction of oil drilling, increasing access to park space. The Banning Ranch story continues to unfold in a really positive way. The latest update, I think I shared previously that the Trust for Public Land has an exclusive negotiating agreement for the purchase of Banning Ranch for use as public open space. So huge opportunity for Costa Mesa in terms of increased access to park space. The Trust for Public Land, in partnership with the Banning Ranch Conservancy and other partners, has raised $83 million of the $97 million purchase price. So this is going to happen, and it's going to happen in our lifetime, which is a little bit unbelievable, quite incredible, very exciting for our community. I'm continuing to follow that, and we'll share updates as that progresses. We will, probably within the next year, have a really great opportunity for our community to contribute directly to some of the conceptual designs of how that park is developed. One other note on events, we heard Ms. Martin talk about Strong Towns. We are getting Strong Towns to come to Costa Mesa. Will be the only stop for the Strong Towns book tour in Orange County. Very exciting. And that is not just due to me. This is due to, you know, some of my involvement. Councilmember Marr has been involved with Strong Towns. City Manager Lorianne Farrell Harrison was really taken by some of the presentations we heard, and then, of course, our very active community. So mark your calendars for November 19th. Strong Towns will be in Costa Mesa, and we're going to try to really, really highlight that because that's a great, 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 great thing for our city to have them here. I have two requests. When we're doing construction, and I think we have some on 19th right now, whenever we block a sidewalk for construction, I've noticed a few times where we don't really provide an alternative option for people who are using the sidewalk, if they're in a wheelchair, a walker, blind, for example. So I'd really like us to make sure if we're ever doing any sort of blockage of sidewalks as part of our construction, we really make sure that we have a safe path for people to get past those areas. And then one quick note on the coyotes, because we've had them in our neighborhood as well, and my hazing has worked. I have had a chance to talk to Park Ranger Matt Anderson, and he shared that one of the challenges that he finds we're facing is coyotes are getting more comfortable in part because people are sort of allowing them to roam and feeding them. So I do think that there is some immediate action we can take is some education. Don't feed coyotes, and really the importance of chasing them away and not just sort of, you know, watching them or hiding in your home. So in my neighborhood, people have sort of buckets and things to make loud noises, and it's worked for us. So maybe we can just amp up that education a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent job. So now we have from District Three, our Mayor Pro Tem, Andrea Marr.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Your pronunciation of the mariachi band name is getting better and better every time you say it, so congratulations on that. Thank you for the Costa Mesa Alliance for Better Streets. I'm really excited about the book. Actually, just texted a picture of it to my dad so I can share it with him after this as well, after I get done reading it. Thank you, Councilmember Chavez, for the recap of the oil spill. That is just devastating. I mean, I can't even, I can't even fathom that. The destruction is just unnecessary, frankly, at this point, right? I mean, that's the thing to understand, is the reason banning ranch is not going to be in oil field anymore is because the operator is choosing to no longer produce oil at that site. And there is frankly no reason why we should still have offshore oil rigs operating that close to the shore. So I'm looking forward to supporting legislative action. I know it's been proposed a bunch of times, but that can't happen soon enough. And I know the city has very little role in controlling offshore oil drilling, but it needs to end. I was in touch with Supervisor Foley about helping to coordinate volunteer efforts, and so I'll certainly be putting that out to the community and publishing it. I can't talk tonight, phew, on my social media when I have further information about how to volunteer. Quick notes on coyotes. So they've done studies of the contents of coyotes' food. They tend to eat things that are 10 pounds and smaller. If you are a 180-pound man, you are not at risk of being attacked by a coyote. If you were a 35-pound child, you are not at risk of being attacked by a coyote unless you were provoking it. They are here now. We have studied it. We have brought in experts. There is very little that we can actually do other than killing all of them, which is illegal and just not an option. So instead, we've got to figure out what to do living side by side with coyotes, and that is, don't feed them. Don't leave food out. Don't leave dog food out. Don't leave leftovers out. Don't leave things out on your grill. Don't leave anything that could be considered an attractant. They're in Te Winkle Park most mornings, and my dog and I sort of wave hello as we walk by. Also, they cross between the Back Bay and Canyon Park and onto Banning Ranch. So yes, they're in residential neighborhoods as they wander between wild open spaces. Thank you, Councilmember Harland, for bringing up the new goal that was added to the city's goals and priorities. I'm very excited about that and looking forward to how we can do more to advance environmental sustainability in the city, including the presentation tonight. And then last but not least, congratulations to City Attorney Barlow on becoming a grandma. Thank you.
That's a great one to end it on. So thank you very much, council and the public, for all your comments. I like, Councilmember Reynolds would have liked to spend more time after the presentation last time thanking each and every department head for your presentation and all the work that you do, and everybody in your department does. I feel very grateful and appreciative for all the work that you've done. But for some reason, there was one little fact that has been rattling around in my head as I drive around in my travels. And that is from the Public Works Department. When Rogers said that there were 3,700 in the last two years, 3,700 reports of graffiti. And on average, we eradicate that graffiti within two hours. What I'd like you all to do is drive around Costa Mesa and drive around certain neighboring cities. Pick a neighboring city. Don't pick Newport Beach, but other neighboring cities, and see if you see graffiti. Because it's like the absence of something in your town isn't as kind of present as the presence of something, if that makes sense. And people are always talking about things that they see that is dissatisfactory, but think of the things that you don't see that would be dissatisfactory if it were here, and it's not because of the hard work of our city staff. Thank you very much for all the work that was done on the planning, strategic planning session. What we did is we set some core values. We revised our goals, and we set six-month objectives under each of the goals. We're going to track those on a monthly basis as the council, and then we're going to come back in March and evaluate whether we hit those objectives, and if not, what do we have to do, and then plan for the next six months, all toward our three-year goals. So that's what we did. It was facilitated by a professional. The council participated, as did staff, right along one another, and it was a very productive day. Some fun stuff. The Model Engineers is back going on the third weekend of every month. I was happy to see that. As Councilmember Chavez said, he and Councilmember Harland and I had a great time at the opening of collage. I learned something interesting about that. You talk about bouncing back from the economy. The representative from Bloomingdale's told me that at 11:30 in the morning every day, 300 people line up to get into collage every day and, you know, try to get a table there. And then, of course, once they leave collage, then they go around to South Coast Plaza. They're buying in South Coast Plaza. So that is a real accelerant and a catalyst to our local community, and we're lucky to have them there. Paradise Dynasty, among others. Mark on your calendar, November 4th at 10 a.m. That's when we're going to have the ceremonial opening of Neff Park. There's a monument that we've purchased. It's going to happen there. You're going to see some improvements to that park coming, but the first is the monument, and it's really quite a thing. Of course, Chief Neff is still with us. He lives over in College Park in Mayor Pro Tem Marr's district, and he'll be there. And it's quite a wonderful thing to dedicate a park in his name with him there. So you're all welcome to join. It's open to the public. Regarding the oil spill, yes, it's terrible. A lot has been said. I really appreciate the comprehensive update by Councilmember Chavez. I appreciate all the work that's being done by Supervisor Foley and our other representatives, Cotty Petrie-Norris and Dave Min and Tom Umberg and everybody else that's worked on that. It's a county emergency now. The Governor Newsom has declared it an emergency. Of course, the city of Huntington Beach did so at an emergency meeting. And so I can say that I will certainly, to the extent that Costa Mesa can do anything to help the situation, I'm very supportive of that, and we will. Regarding the issue over on Del Mar, I plan to engage with that resident. I will tell you that on the west side, I had a similar issue that was raised, and it was addressed very well by the police department. And so I think, I appreciate that type of feedback. It's good to tell us the things that are pain points in the community so we can do what we can to relieve that pain. That's how things get better. So I thank that gentleman and everybody else that has come up, including the folks that talked about coyotes. Now, we're a little bit kind of messed up because of the pandemic. of the pandemic, because back in 2019, we did look at this, and we established April as Coyote Awareness Month. And then, of course, April 2020, we were in the midst of the pandemic. April 2021, we were in the midst of the Delta variant. So we've skipped to Coyote Awareness Months. So I think really, especially too, for the benefit of Councilmember Harper and Councilmember Gamaros, who weren't on council during that time when it was raised, I think we should have another briefing on that, and, and maybe like happens so often where, you know, we're having the St. John the Baptist Festival. I should mention that, too. The St. John the Baptist Festival is usually in June, right when school gets out. But this year, they'd be happy to have me tell you, it's October 15th, 16th, and 17th, the Baker Street Bash, right here on Baker Street. So go have a great time. And I don't know what they're featuring, but my point is, it's in June. Now it's in October, so maybe we pick another month for Coyote Awareness Month in the near future to educate the community, do a little bit more study, and educate the council and our new staff about what we learned back in 2019. That's all I have. City Manager Farrell Harrison, you have the floor for your city manager report.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, and honorable council members. I just had a couple of updates for you this evening. First, I wanted to start with thanking you for acknowledging the lengthy, but hopefully very meaningful, report that we provided to you at the last meeting that we had. So thank you for those comments. We're really proud of those accomplishments, and we were so excited about them. We didn't want to leave anything out. And so, thank you for acknowledging that. I couldn't be more proud of the team that we have here in Costa Mesa, and it's inspiring to work with them and to just work alongside them with their creativity and their dedication and commitment. I think we're really lucky to have the staff that we have here in Costa Mesa. So speaking of staff, I wanted to acknowledge and to introduce to you a couple of new employees and hires for the city. One of the things that we've been talking about also in our strategic plan conversation is succession planning. It's not something that we do very well in government as a general rule. We have not been prepared for the, what's called Silver Tsunami and retirements that are happening throughout the region, across the country, and we're starting to build back up that capacity and making sure that we have redundancy. We do have a succession plan in every single department, that there's a second-in-command that we all recognize as a second-in-command that can take over operations in the event of an emergency. And so there are two key staff members that I wanted to introduce to you today, and I want to thank HR for doing a great job in recruiting new employees into the city. They do a record number of recruitments and job applications and screenings and are just busy around the clock. So first, I wanted to acknowledge Rob Ryan, who's our Maintenance Services Manager. Rob, if you could stand. Just very quickly, you're probably familiar with him. He's been with the city for, you know, quite a bit of time, but in his new position, he'll oversee facilities, fleet, parks, streets, and warehousing sections of the Maintenance Services Division. And that Maintenance Services Division is just so key to the quality of life for a lot of our residents, but also to the quality of life of our employees and maintaining our facilities. Ryan has been serving as Acting Superintendent of Parks and Streets of the Maintenance Division over the past year, and he's been with the city for over seven years and has over 17 years of experience in maintenance. He's a state-licensed pesticide applicator and an ISA, that's International Society of Arboretal Culture, certified arborist. And you may recall that he led the effort to explore how we could modernize the dog park and make it a little bit more amenable to some of the changes that our residents have been asking for. And so prior to joining Costa Mesa, Ryan spent 11 years as a general manager of a landscape pest control company, so he also has experience there and sports, turf, and landscape, pest and disease management and control. So very well-rounded experience, really integral to what we do at the city, and a great person to have in the management ranks, and we're happy to have that promotion and for Rajah's team to be even stronger than it was before. So I wanted to just mention that. And then we also have Scott Drapkin, who's our new Assistant Development Services Director. He'll be a big help to Jennifer Lee. So Scott, if you could please stand. So as you know, our Development Services Department is tasked with many high-level projects of some short-term, long-term, everything from cannabis to short-term rentals to housing, to housing elements, to day-to-day permit processing and plan checks. And so we're really, really happy that we stole Scott from Laguna Beach. He comes to us with a broad array of experience, two decades of experience in development services. He's really excited and has rolled his sleeves up. I know that he has great experience in government and is very familiar with all the challenges that cities face, so we're really happy to have Scott welcome. And we're just glad to be able to, you know, again, have this redundancy, bring in the second-in-commands, and have a real good opportunity for additional breadth, depth, and scope in our ranks. And so thank you, Scott, for choosing Costa Mesa. And then just a couple of other updates. I just wanted to remind everyone that the street sweeping enforcement resumed as of October 1st. And as you know, we did have a moratorium for some time due to the pandemic, but the enforcement was create, the lack of enforcement or our decision to suspend the enforcement did have an effect on trash, and so we need to make sure that our streets are safe and we're keeping everyone healthy. So we have resumed as of October 1st, so just making sure that the public is aware of that, that street sweeping enforcement is back. It does not affect the residential permit parking enforcement, which is still suspended until the city completes the citywide parking study. And so I did want to update the council. And Councilmember Chavez, you mentioned this earlier about the study session for next week. Actually, this is hot off the presses. The staff has actually met again with the vendor to discuss some of the feedback that we received at the last community meeting, but all along, some of the feedback that also some of you have provided during the past week based on what you're hearing from residents. And so we're going to do a little bit of a deeper dive, look at some additional alternatives, get a little bit more data about all of our zones and the composition of the different zones, so we can bring an even more refined proposal to you at the study session. And so we'll probably bring the study session materials and conduct that. We're thinking in November. It gives us a time to circle back with the vendor. She had some great ideas today, and also Joel Donna, some of the questions that you've raised and some of the feedback that we received from the community. So thanks to everyone who's participated in those four community meetings. We've gotten a lot of great feedback, and we're excited to come back with some additional recommendations based on that input. For Hispanic Heritage Month, I just wanted to mention it's a special month for me personally. As a Latina, I'm proud of my Latino heritage. It's always great to have this time dedicated to the accomplishments and contributions of Latinos in American culture. It's, you know, Latin culture is American culture, and so really happy just to have the opportunity to participate in a virtual panel tomorrow with Vanguard University from 6:00 to 7:30. I'm one of four women that will be engaged in this panel discussion, and if you're interested, please join us for that discussion. We have further information in our office on that, but you can also email jessymiranda@vanguard.edu. Regarding the oil spill, it's something that's basically touched all of us. It's a tragic situation. We will be working to see how we can help our volunteers get involved when the time comes. There are some ways that we can assist. That's not quite volunteering with the cleanup, per se, but donations that can be given to Pacific Marine Mammal Center, and they're the ones who are working on addressing some of the issues with the wildlife that has been affected. And so we do have a number that you can call and/or an email address if you'd like to donate Dawn dish soap, rubber boots and aprons, Ziploc bags, paper towels, and more. And so we'll get that information out through our Public Information Officer. Obviously, council members will make sure that you get that information. Tony has been talking to them since yesterday, and this is the latest information that we received about a way that we can help. And so we're glad to do that, and thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Marr, for calling me early in the morning to say, what can we do? What more can we do? And let's offer some additional assistance. And so I'm hoping that at a minimum, we can provide this support to the effort. And then lastly, just wanted to thank again our incredible Costa Mesa TV team once again. They've done some award-winning work. They won two awards of excellence, this time for government programming, and those awards were announced during the organization's national conference this past Thursday. And so big congrats to Dane for leading that team, Jeff Trujillo and Ron Dam for all their hard work, creativity, and innovation. They continue to impress me. I'm so glad that they're not working for CNN or another network, but it's definitely that caliber. So thank you. That's all.
Is that, is that, is that it? Okay, that was good. I'm not suggesting you should say more. I'm just wondering, wondering if you're done. Okay, so Grandma Barlow's not here, so do you have, Tarquin, do you have a report from the city attorney's office other than the birth of Kim's grandchild?
I can't top the birth of the grandchild, though I will have no report this evening.
All right. It's brief. I like it. Okay, now, let's move on. Get down to business. Our consent calendar is the first group of items that we have. All matters listed under the consent calendar are to be considered routine and will be acted upon in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the city council, staff, or the public request items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for discussion. Madam Clerk, are there any requests from the public, staff, or council to pull any of these consent calendar items?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The public has requested the acceptance and allocation of the Office of Traffic Safety Grant. It's CC 6.
Okay. Number six on our consent calendar was pulled by a member of the public. Any others?
None.
Okay. Then on the, on the balance, I'll entertain a motion.
Move the balance?
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Chavez and second by Councilmember Marr. Let's call for the question on the balance of the consent calendar.
Motion carries 7-0.
Okay, consent calendar number six is up, and it was pulled by a member of the public. So Madam Clerk, would you please read the title?
That is acceptance and allocation of the Office of Traffic Safety Grant for the Selective Traffic Enforcement Program, and it was pulled by Ms. Martin.
Ms. Martin, you pulled the item, and I'll open it up for public comment. You have the floor. Take your time. All the way up to three minutes. Take your time.
I'm here to rattle a cage, specifically the Costa Mesa Police Department cage.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Hold on one second.
Okay.
We're going to start your time now.
I'm here to rattle the Costa Mesa Police Department cage. In reading this grant description, best practices, best practice strategies will be conducted to reduce the number of persons killed and injured in crashes involving alcohol and other primary factors. The funded strategies may include impaired driving, including alcohol enforcement, distracted driving, et cetera, et cetera. I participated in mid-August in a day-long stakeholders' meeting of the road safety plan for this city. One of the participants was a Costa Mesa police officer who told us that one of the primary causes of crashes in the city is impaired and distracted driving. A couple of nights ago, I was reading my Twitter feed, and I came across this tweet from a friend. We have traveled together. We have been to meetings together, and she tweeted, she's a Costa Mason, on her bike a lot, and she tweeted this. Yesterday, I was on my bike and stopped at a red light when I heard a mic voice say, "Why are you on your cellphone?" It wasn't me. Two motorcycle cops had pulled up, and they were addressing a man in a car next to them, but they did nothing. They didn't pull him over. Nothing. End of tweet. I asked her a few minutes later, where were you? And she said, "I was traveling on Superior towards 17th Street," so I'm assuming she had stopped at Pomona. And she told me that the two motorcycle officers who had noticed the distracted driver did nothing. I would like the Costa Mesa PD to put their money where their mouth is and get more officers to actually enforce the rules. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else from the public that wishes to speak who's in the chambers?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna echo Ms. Martin's comments. You know, I feel, I don't know, I feel very mixed about the way that we want to use law enforcement at a given moment to making sure that we're safer and that we have a safer public. But something that I think we need to understand and we need to kind of reconceptualize our understanding of as, as people, as members of community, and as people, especially in Orange County, is that, you know, we have these several-ton vehicles that people are playing bumper cars with, that, you know, they can be on their cellphones, they can be impaired. And we have entrusted them the responsibility of being safe, and I, and I think traffic data has showed that that's not necessarily the case, and that's not the outcome that happens. And so I think we need some fundamental changes, like the way we change our streets, the way we do get around. But I actually think, you know, enforcement as a part of that is, is an important step. I don't think it's the only step. I don't even think it's the first step, but I do think it's a step that's involved. So I do want to echo Ms. Martin's comments. Thank you all.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else in the chambers from the public that wishes to speak on this? Okay, what about on Zoom, Madam Clerk?
No, Mr. Mayor.
So we have nobody on Zoom. Okay, so then I'll close the public comment, and then we have members of our Police Department are here. Do any council members have any questions for the officers? I don't see anyone. I mean, you have no obligation to. Do you want to say anything?
Lieutenant Clint DeBol, Costa Mesa Police.
Thank you for being here.
Good evening, council members, Madam City Attorney. I don't have anything. We could, I could answer your question maybe offline or make a statement to you regarding that. I'd be happy to do so. I was prepared to ask, take questions. However, if there are none, I'm okay with that, too.
All right.
But thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, you were inches from a clean getaway. Council, Councilmember Reynolds, you have the floor.
Well, you encouraged me to ask you a question by saying you're here to answer questions. So let me, let me ask you one. In an area I've been particularly interested, and that's the pedestrian and bicyclist safety. I understand that a part of this grant includes some activities specifically related to that. Can you just describe what those activities are?
Yes. So the last one we did, some of you may have seen it or remember, but it was around graduation time. We went to Placentia and 20th Street. We went to 17th and Raymond and a couple of the locations, and we sent out a decoy dressed in the graduation gown and cap. And we ended up citing multiple people for violating the crosswalk. So when we talk about pedestrian enforcement, it's out of the safety of the pedestrians. So not necessarily, we have cited pedestrians and roadways many times, but the focus is on making sure that we educate the public on the importance of crosswalk safety. So that was that, that's what that was about.
One follow-up question, because I remember being a little bit startled by the number of violations, right, of people zooming past pedestrian students, graduates, right, trying to cross the street. What's our follow-up action when we identify that there is a problem? What's our follow-up action when we identify that there is a problem?
Well, the, the education to the public comes in the form of a citation on those operations. When we do that, follow-up is essentially, we keep monitoring, keep track of, of where those things are and, and identify those locations, specifically crosswalks, where we need to conduct that enforcement. So we use people calling in, we use our, our data and our traffic patterns and a variety of different things to make a determination on where we're going to deploy our resources to handle those events.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Yeah, well, let me just comment that I, I think those are really valuable sort of public exercises. And I think, again, I was startled. I, I want to say it was like forty tickets in an hour or forty tickets in two hours, which is, which is startling, right? Those are important numbers to share with our community and, and the threat is real, right? We've had incidents in our community with injuries and deaths. So I have noticed that the Office of Transportation Safety is behind a lot of really interesting education activities and engagement activities. So I'd love to, to have a converse, follow-up conversation on how we can get more money to continue to support follow-up activities to really, really work towards not having those numbers in the future.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
So electronic bikes, or electric bikes, rather, electric bikes are becoming more prevalent in our community. And in fact, the Electric Bike Company has headquartered in Costa Mesa and sells electric bikes like hotcakes. So is education regarding electric bike safety and enforcement of the rules regarding electric bikes, is that something that falls within the scope of this grant?
Yes. Would you like to talk about that?
And then the follow-up question is, are we doing anything different? Are we planning to do anything differently, either with these funds or otherwise, with respect to electric bikes?
I'd like to offer that answer by Officer Jose Torres.
Officer Torres, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, this grant, this OTS, Office of Traffic Safety, within the, the grant itself for bicycle safety, pet safety. We also are obligated to go to our local schools. I mainly, I'm the one that oversees that, try to speak to sixth-grade classes, coordinate with the principal, and, and to educate the students of what can and cannot be done with these electric bicycles. Because as you can see, there's a, they're, they're everywhere. They're everywhere. What needs to be done? Whether they need to wear a helmet, stopper stop signs, riding the right side of the road. Basically, it's educational to, to the students who ride them daily as to how to safely ride them on our public streets. Because again, a lot of these juveniles underage feel that they don't have to wear a helmet or they can, because some of these go pretty fast. We've clocked them with our laser. I mean, they're doing thirty-five to forty miles per hour. And again, we need to address that, what, what rules of the road they need to follow in order to be within compliance. Otherwise, they, they will be cited. Again, it's a safety issue. But again, that's part of the OTS grant that we, the Costa Mesa Police Department, needs to go to local schools. And again, we, or I make the determination which schools we're going to go to. What's, we're going to be going to Adams, College Park, Kaiser, and I still haven't picked out the fourth one. We have to do a total of four presentations.
Okay. Well, I mean, if I could just follow up just briefly, you know, I'm kind of a lifelong learner and I've never been on an electric bike. So I'm in no better position than the kids at Kaiser in terms of what to do on an electric bike. So what about electric bike education for, you know, old, broken-down, fifty-nine-year-old balding guys that are going to get on a bike for the first time?
I think it's in the works, too. And we'll be talking to our public relations officer to maybe do some video to, to show the public, the residents of Costa Mesa, what, what rules we have to follow and, again, what needs to be done as, like you said, as an adult. Again, what the, the rules of the road, what, what needs to happen, what, what, a lot of folks, a lot of folks feel that they, they have to wear a helmet, too, well, not if you're an adult. So.
I'm going to wear one anyway. Councilmember Marr.
Yeah, I saw something that the City of Newport Beach put out that was like this very complex one-pager with like a, it was like a chart with like, it's like, I don't know, we call it a meatball chart with like tick boxes for what applies and three kinds of by. Phew. I, I would just ask that like our education geared towards being easy to understand, we're encouraging people to beat bikes, it's not, we're, to ride bikes. We're not trying to make it like, read this legal document before you can figure out whether or not you're supposed to wear a helmet. So I think a lot of it is like how we say it, not what we say it. So just, at the end of the day, it's still a good thing to have people riding bikes, electric bikes, being out there as safely as possible.
Yes, I truly believe, we'll, we'll be addressing or dealing with, you know, elementary, you know, middle and high school-aged kids. So we want to make it simple so they can understand and comprehend, you know, what's being addressed then, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Oh, Councilmember Gamaros.
I think everything's been said, so go, go ahead. Thank you.
Oh, wonderful. All right, if that, if that's the case, oh, do we have a, do we have a motion by Councilmember Marr and a second by Councilmember Gamaros to approve the item? You're good, good clerk?
Second.
Okay, got it? Let's call for the question.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you very much. It's always great to see you.
Good to see you, too, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, so we have one public hearing item today. Madam clerk, would you please read the title?
All right, this is introduction of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Costa Mesa, California, amending Chapter Four, Garbage, Rubbish, and Weeds of Title Eight Health and Sanitation of the Costa Mesa Municipal Code to Implement the Requirements of Senate Bill 1383, which is the mandatory organic waste disposal reduction." Presentation by Mr. Seth Araman, Public Services Director. Thank you.
Mr. Seth Araman, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. So this item is regarding Senate Bill 1383 regulations that were adopted to reduce methane emissions through organics recycling and, and also other measures. So we have our solid waste consultant, Mike Ballez, who will be presenting the report. Following that, we'll have Sir Ramafavarki, our Energy Sustainability Manager, as well as our Assistant City Attorney, Mr. Pezziozi. They'll, they are available to answer any questions you may have.
Okay.
With that, I'll have Mike start the presentation.
Sir, can you say your last name again?
It's Ballez.
Ballez. Mr. Ballez, you have the floor.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. And Rajan Sulem, I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to present what represents months and months of work and hundreds of pages of regulations to go through. SB 1383 regulations, we had a study session back, I think, in January. It's a climate pollution reduction regulations, actually initially passed in 2006. In 2019, the regulations were finalized. We, as a city, residents, businesses combined, have to reduce organic waste going to landfills by seventy-five percent in 2025. And mandatory actions by the city actually start January 1st of 2022. The regulations make the city the ultimate responsible party for a number of things. You have to provide organics recycling collection to residents and businesses. You have to have an edible food recovery program that increases food donations and food getting to food insecure individuals by twenty percent. The city has to procure point zero eight tons of recycled organics product per resident per year. That's a mandatory reduction, or mandatory procurement requirement. Capacity planning, you have to make sure facilities are available for all this material that's mandated to be recycled. Inspections and contamination monitoring has to be performed constantly throughout the year by the city or a city designee. And lastly, we have to educate the public, businesses, haulers, self-haulers, edible food donators, and the folks that collect it on specific state requirements. Now, the city doesn't have to do it completely alone. There are some partners out there. The Costa Mesa Sanitary District handles your residential franchise. They're a partner. Local nonprofits like Food Finders, Orange Coast College and their Recovery Kitchen can help with edible food recovery. Again, the city is handling the procurement side, but through contracting, vendors providing cities, city services can help us towards our procurement goals. Capacity planning, we work with the county on that. And again, our franchise haulers are a big partner, and so that's why one of the enforceable mechanisms we'll discuss is a new agreement. So, mentioned enforceable mechanisms, that's the terminology that the state uses. They require the city to adopt enforceable mechanisms for each of the prescriptive requirements of SB 1383. Since you have to mandate generators, like residents and businesses, haulers, self-haulers to do things, the city code is really the only makes sense vehicle to do that. Haulers are the makes sense partner for a lot of the provisions of programs. So again, enforceable mechanisms and their agreement is the, the other action. So again, in municipal code revisions, there are a number of new definitions. Regulations are passed constantly, so we needed an update there. Again, we have to put in the provisions to require automatic enrollment and programs by residents and businesses, establish necessary self-haul requirements. We have to mandate educational requirements. Businesses have to, under these regulations, educate their employees on what materials to put in what new containers, including a retail center that has a new tenant come in. They have to educate them within fourteen days. There's a lot of detail in this. The non-exclusive franchise agreement, again, the city has to have a program that's provided. They have to use state mandated colors and labels for those programs. They have to have capacity in place, i.e., facilities to take this material. And our haulers are a valuable asset in that. But again, we need contractual obligations. For example, that capacity, we have to show the state that we have capacity that can be done through the execution of these agreements. We also need haulers to help doing route reviews to see what contamination is happening, where it is, and educate those individuals or businesses who are putting the wrong materials and the wrong containers, referred to as prohibited container contaminants. So, the non-exclusive franchise. The city operated under a permit system for a number of years. I'm old enough to have been around for most of them or all of them. You went to a franchise that was basically an, an addendum to that permit. So haulers became franchised by getting a permit. With all of these requirements and enforceable mechanisms, the city notified the haulers in October of 2020 that they would not be renewing their permits. That allowed you to transition to the franchise agreement that you have before you. Now, again, with all these prescriptive requirements and also another point I almost forgot is that procurement mandate, a very expensive one. If the haulers are under an agreement with the city and they use renewable natural gas, for example, in their collection fleet, the city can get procurement credit for that. So there's a number of reasons a written agreement was determined to be the way to go rather than the annual permit system. So in this non-exclusive franchise agreement, the haulers are required to roll out all the required programs to residents and businesses, perform the route monitoring, contamination monitoring that the law requires be performed, provide all the educational material notices to businesses, and report to the city. Because ultimately, the city must report all these actions to the state. Again, I'll get into the costs in a minute, but the new franchise agreement has an annual $120,000 a year fee that will help the city with all of its monitoring, reporting, and enforcement requirements. That is not a per-hauler fee. That is proportionally shared by all the haulers. And we anticipate there will be six or seven, and it's based upon their share of business in the city. So let's look at the impacts and what the costs are. Again, SB 1383 is an unfunded mandate that the city is entirely responsible for implementing, monitoring, and making sure it's successful. The biggest anticipated cost is that procurement piece. If you look at the city's population and multiply it by point zero eight tons, that's over 9,000 tons. One of the products that's required to be purchased is mulch. You'd have to buy 9,093 tons of mulch to meet the goal. Compost is another item that is available. And then I mentioned renewable natural gas and electricity and heat from recycled organic product use. Those markets aren't as established and may present some initial challenges, but I think a $200,000 a year cost is, is an accurate impact upon the city that we need to plan for. So how is the city going to pay for this? Again, we have monitoring and maintenance of program requirements, some of which we can put on the haulers, but others of which are going to fall to the city to, to handle. Growing the edible food donations, again, we have great volunteer partners, but ultimately, the regulations make the city financially responsible if this twenty percent growth in donations exceeds these volunteer organizations' ability to handle that amount of material. We have all these new programs haulers are giving to residents and businesses. The city has to monitor them to make sure that they're doing what they're supposed to do and that the residents and businesses are getting the services they're supposed to get. And again, that monitoring, we're estimating is going to cost about $150,000 per year. Again, that also includes enforcement. The city by 2024 has to find non-compliant entities or the city will be fined. So again, that calls in code enforcement potentially. So again, I think the cost is realistic. So, again, to pay for that $350,000 a year cost, we believe the combination of the agreement, the new fee, and the state mandated services, organic waste recycling and traditional recycling are now no longer optional, really, they haven't been since 2016 for a number of businesses. But the, the hammer, as far, as far as the state mandate saying, "City, you have to deliver these containers to people," it's no longer, well, we're letting them voluntarily subscribe. That goes away on January 1st. So again, by businesses having to have these new programs and the costs associated with that, we're estimating that franchise fee revenue to the city, which is based on a percentage of hauler business, will increase by about 10%. It's important to note that the state is estimating the average increases to ratepayers are going to be 25 to 40%. City of Costa Mesa is one of the few cities in Orange County that still has a competitive hauling community for your multifamily and your businesses. There are six or seven haulers that are going to be competing. The city is not setting rates for those haulers, so that's why we're estimating our, our cost impact is only going to be 10% as opposed to that 25 to 40% figure the state has put out. That combined with a $120,000 fee in this agreement should get us to a revenue-neutral point. So, again, these are required enforceable mechanisms that the cities have to pass. Again, by using the hauler as our partner in a lot of these activities, we need an agreement to govern that activity, and that's what's before you today. So again, once these items are in place, there's much work to do before the first of the year with the haulers. We need to do our education and outreach, expanding upon what's already being done, work with the Chamber of Commerce to, to get in front of the businesses, let them know what's coming, collaborate with the Costa Mesa Sanitary District, and then finalize the procurement policy that we've also been working on quite a bit lately. And with that, I'll open it up to questions.
Council, do you have any questions? Oh, Councilmember Harland, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm curious.
So, I'm curious, I'm hoping you could walk us through, what does this mean for the average resident or business once this starts? What is their trash collection and recycling look like?
Well, the biggest impact is going to be to residents, single-family and multifamily. Up until now, they have been exempted from having to recycle their food waste. January 1st of 2022, that goes away. So, single-family residents have to recycle their food waste and multifamily residents. City of Costa Mesa has been ahead of the curve with the Costa Mesa Sanitary District franchise. They already have a green waste and food waste combined recycling program, but your multifamily properties do not. So those programs have to be rolled out. Luckily, the state is giving a two-year period of educating rather than fining for noncompliance, but we anticipate a lot of effort will be needed to change behavior and get folks to put the right things in the right container. In addition, you have a number of businesses that haven't voluntarily complied with state mandates. Now, by January 1st, they have to have containers at their businesses and have a program in place. Those are the big changes.
And so the agreement identifies different kinds of bins?
State mandated colors and signage have to be provided under the agreement by the haulers.
So the blue bins will be a new for residents, as far as recyclable materials?
For some. For the Costa Mesa Sanitary District, they're going to, for now, continue with their two-cart program.
Okay.
Where they combine recyclables and trash in one container, and it is sorted at a facility. Part of these regulations establish a high diversion rate requirement for facilities doing such mixed waste processing, and in 2024, that will jump to 75% diversion requirement. So the residential program may change, I don't know, I can't speak to that.
So I know when I first moved here, 16 some odd years ago, it was a little surprise coming from LA where everything was source separated to see that we didn't have blue bins. I'm curious, though, if there's been any sort of analysis to show that when it's commingled, the actual diversion does get to the rate that it needs to be or higher? And I ask that partly because we're, you know, seemingly, if we're asking people to do organic separation, it's a behavioral issue. We want them to, you know, be cognizant of the waste that they produce and how to dispose of it or recycle it. And to my mind, it always seemed like a blue bin was an easy thing to do as well. You wanna encourage that continuous behavior. So, again, I guess my question is, has there been an assessment of those diversion rates when it's commingled?
Well, there have been audits, and the residential franchise has shown it was diverting over 50%, I think 57%. So it was very successful, but again, that's not to say if you mix food with paper, you're gonna lose some of the recyclability of some of the paper. The challenge now is the state has completely changed the game. They're requiring 75% reduction of all organic waste. So really, the standards have changed, and what facilities and programs have to do have really done a paradigm shift. So, it seems the push is for source separation, but there are still allowances to allow you not to do that, but a much higher threshold to meet.
Right. So my assumption then is we're gonna have a big educational campaign initially, and that probably will be ongoing, but we're gonna have to come up with ways to communicate to the public, this is a state mandate.
Correct.
Here's what has to be done, here's the way we're gonna aid and assist that from the city's standpoint.
Correct.
Okay. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next in the queue is Councilmember Harper.
Thanks, Mr. Belli. I had questions like Harland's, but they're not as good. Just to clarify, so from a residential standpoint, right now I have my leaves and my grass clippings, and am I gonna have another bin, or you said no, didn't you?
No, you can combine your food waste with your green waste in the Costa Mesa Sanitary District franchise right now. They use a dry anaerobic digester in Paris, California, and they're able to take that mix of material.
So they're not going to landfill right now?
No.
So they're way, like you said, they're way ahead, aren't they?
Way ahead.
Okay, so it's really the, is our city service the one that's behind the curve on this?
Well, it's the multifamily that up until January of 2022 has not been required to recycle their food waste.
Okay.
That's the big shift. And again, you have some older built-out areas with space constraint challenges. Again, multifamily, a lot of those properties have a communal bin, so now you're gonna have to have a communal recycling bin and a communal organic waste recycling cart. It's a logistical challenge that there's no roadmap for the city. It's, you just have to get these programs out there and deal with it and educate. So it will be interesting.
And I'm not supposed to put my eggshells down the garbage disposal. I think I learned that in the study session, right? So we're gonna educate people that you shouldn't be throwing, you should be putting those, you should be separating those, right?
Well, again, the idea is you can make useful products by keeping it out of the garbage disposal. But again, I think a lot of that is not to overload that system to be able to process that material and the pipes and the infrastructure, it's just, there's no easy answer.
That kind of material, food products and things like that, that should go with the leaves?
Right. It can create compost, it can create, you know, anaerobic digester is gonna create gas, renewable natural gas, and then compost afterwards. So again, it can produce product.
Gotcha. How do they measure, how do they measure our effectiveness by a city-by-city basis? And then what's the agency that actually does that? Because you've got some pretty specific percentages to meet, I just don't understand.
Yeah, CalRecycle is the successor agency to the Integrated Waste Management Board, and they're the ones that make sure cities are complying with regulations. Now, the difference is, this is a statewide mandate with specifics for every city. AB 939 allowed cities to develop their own programs to reach a goal. This one says, nope, everybody's doing the same thing, and here's the 178 pages of, you know, suggested things to put in your code to make sure you're doing what the state requires you to do.
So, for example, how do you measure the 20% increase in diverted food?
That's gonna be tough, because I don't think anybody did a complete count before. I think they're gonna work with these agencies. Again, they require the city to develop a program and have partner nonprofits that you work with, and again, they have a, they do a wonderful job, impressive individuals, and they know how much they've been collecting previously. So again, collectively, through all that data, that once again, the city's responsible for compiling and reporting to the state, they're gonna try to estimate that 20% gain.
So it's really a kind of a self-reporting, isn't it? And we can shoot ourselves in the foot by...
Well, again, your job is to put the program in place, and it's a goal. And so if you're doing everything you can, but you're in a city where you're already doing a great job, you're not gonna be zapped for that, no.
So yeah, it says that penalties are for noncompliance, more noncompliance of the program, not necessarily that we're not effective.
Yeah, for example, the big one right now is to pass your ordinance before January of 2022. So again, in doing that, the city sets itself up well for '22 and '23, which is an educational period, but you've already got all the requirements in place. Now you're developing your program and educating the folks that are required to do these new behaviors.
My last question, what's the blue bin for?
Recycling dry, typical recyclables, paper, cardboard, beverage containers are blue, green or brown are the organics-related recycling, and then gray or black is trash.
Trash, okay. Thanks a lot, Mr. Belli.
Sure.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember. Mayor Protam Mark.
So can you clarify who's responsible for the education and the enforcement at multifamily properties? Is that through the haulers, or are we all?
Well, it's ultimately the city, but what the city's doing through the franchise agreement is it is delegating some responsibilities to the haulers, providing the program, doing the education, doing the route monitoring, which will note where contamination is, and then initially giving educational materials to those properties, letting them know, here's what you need to do. And then eventually enforcement, when that comes in 2024, that's likely something the city will be doing, but again, you know, the haulers are doing a lot of the heavy lifting there as far as providing the program, educating, monitoring, reporting to the city. It cuts down on the cost to the city that way.
Do we have a mixed incentive problem? If the multifamily property can choose any hauler that they want, are they gonna choose a hauler that's saying, "You gotta use this bin, and I'm gonna be checking up on you"?
Well, all the haulers have to do the same thing under the agreement. They're all under the same agreement, and one of the clauses is if they're not implementing all the programs, if they're trying to cheat to get business, then we kick them out of the franchise and nobody new comes in.
Okay.
So we have a very good group of haulers, but good rules make, or like, good fences make good neighbors, good rules make good partners, and so that's why we have an extensive franchise agreement.
Okay, fair enough. And then, I don't think I heard you talk about the food recovery program at all. What's our plan there?
Well, you have a wonderful organization in Food Finders that works throughout LA and Orange County and Riverside County. They have applications and software that people can say, "Hey, I have material to donate," and they'll send somebody out there to get it and take it to a pantry or a recovery kitchen. Orange Coast College has one of the greatest programs I've ever seen as far as a recovery kitchen. They can prepare meals, freeze them, you know, they feed a lot of people. And so, we have two great partners there, but we need to let the residents and businesses of the city know.
Yep.
If you wanna volunteer, here's a number to volunteer and help them. If you wanna donate to their cause, they can do the work, we just have to make sure they have the volunteers and, you know, the people supporting what they're doing, and that the city's helping to publicize them.
Okay, that's good.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protam, in addition to that, Waste Now OC, that's now, it's called Abound.
Abound Food Care, yeah.
Abound Food Care. So that's another example of food recovery. So, we'll be partnering with different organizations like that and promoting that to our businesses through our website. Like I said, there'll be a lot of outreach and education that the city also will be doing, and this is one of that.
Okay, thank you. And then I'm assuming we've been talking to the sanitary district. We've got a, we're very fortunate to have a really excellent relationship with our sanitary district, so I'm wondering to what extent they can help with education, outreach, funding some of the education and outreach?
Yes, so sanitary district is definitely a very important partner, because they serve almost 40% of our city by serving the single-family neighborhoods and also some multifamily. So, we have started coordination meetings with them already on this SB 1383. So there will be joint marketing efforts, educational efforts to the public on the requirements, the benefits of it, so the whole nine yards.
Okay, but when you're authorizing us to appropriate $175,000, that is based on franchise revenue rather than pure out-of-pocket capital expense, so there's no point in asking the sand district to chip in funds now? Is that kinda how I'm interpreting that?
So Mayor Protam, there will be a time we have to figure out a way of cost, some cost sharing. If the city is ultimately responsible even for the sand district portion of reporting to the state. While they administer that contract for waste hauling, the city is the one that's responsible. So, if we have to do enforcement, code enforcement in their single-family areas, that comes under the city, so there should be some cost sharing. So those are the discussions that we will have over time.
Okay. And then, I don't know, dumb organic composting question, but does everything have to go to Paris, or is there an opportunity to compost? We've got our community gardens, we've got lots of people who garden, I don't know.
The regulations allow hauling to community composting.
Okay.
Locations, and then the various haulers have different facilities where they take materials, so not everything goes to Paris.
Okay. Yeah, I'd love to find out we can keep it local as much as possible and not, you know, even if it's renewable gas, not drive all of our waste all the way out to Paris if we don't have to. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Reynolds, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you. One additional question, trying to foresee some challenges. We have multifamily properties of all shapes and sizes, and we've already had some challenges with rats and other infestation in our trash facilities at multifamily buildings. As someone who does my best to save all my table scraps and keep a healthy compost, like, it's real work, right? And it attracts bugs and creates bugs. Not always a pretty sight. How, if I'm picturing a giant compost, something very attractive to a lot of vermin, right, at a lot of multifamily facilities, how do, who's responsible to like, make sure that doesn't become a huge problem in terms of infestation? Is that the property manager? Is that the hauler?
Yes.
I'm just foreseeing it being a big issue.
Some of the mitigation measures, for example, in the agreement, we require the haulers to allow residents to use bags to bag their container. It's a little more expensive for them to process, because now they have to have a bag opener to get the material out to process it and recycle it. But it would be a significant health and safety challenge to have unbagged food waste going into a cart that's then dumped and put back, it's smell and odor issues. But again, that's part of the challenge. Now, the state does allow space constraint waivers at commercial properties, so that would be your multifamily five-unit or more potentially, if there's not space for an additional container. But really, it's an unknown, like a lot of things with these regulations, very well-intentioned, but practically, there's gonna be some logistical challenges to work through. So ultimately, the property owner or manager of that property is responsible. That may not be fair or great if they have a tenant that just won't cooperate and ruins for everybody else, but really, I don't see who else would be in the line the way the regulation's written. It's whoever's paying that trash bill, that's the generator.
Okay, and is there anything we can do? I wasn't thinking about this in skimming this current agreement, or is there anything we can do to try to, you know, have as responsible as possible parties doing the hauling to sort of help with mitigation of that potential problem?
Well, in your code already, you have a lot of service standards requirements, and again, I think code enforcement would handle the cleaning of enclosures if that's not being done well. And again, with the haulers, there is some wording in the agreement as far as maintaining the area that they're collecting, because if they're dropping litter and scraps, they need to pick that up. So I think we have that covered fairly well between the code and the new agreement.
Okay, okay. So maybe it's just some best practices as part of the education, okay, to the property managers. Yep. Yeah, got it. I think it's all good stuff, but I know that's gonna come up.
Okay, it will, yes.
All right, I just have one question. So, if we have to purchase 9,000 tons of material, let's just say it's compost, for the sake of discussion. I think I was told yesterday in my briefing that we use, as a city, about 100 tons. So that leaves, if my math is right, 8,900 tons that needs to be distributed in some form and fashion. What is the plan for distributing that material to the community, and is there any possibility to use that distribution to recover at least some of the costs of purchasing it?
Well, very good question.
Thank you.
Difficult to answer, but the reality is, the way the regulations are written, there's a number of things that the city gets to pick and choose from. Electricity from biomass, heat and electricity from renewable natural gas, using renewable natural gas in vehicles. The problem is, those markets haven't really developed to the point where you can go to the gas company and say, "Hey, I want to get this many thermes of renewable natural gas to run in my city fleet," or "I wanna get my electricity from, you know, renewable natural gas or from biomass." So again, what I'm... So again, what I, I'm suggesting, I'm lucky enough to work with a few cities, is that you, you go to those utilities and try to confirm what's available. And a lot of it's not going to be available in 2022. Maybe in 2023 it won't be available. But see what avenues are available. Cause again, you brought up compost. Compost is about 5,900 tons that you would have to buy. Mulch is at the one ton to one resident kind of factor. Energy is something different. So it's supposed to be a mix and max match per the regs, but if eight of the, the 10 things aren't available, I think the city may have a case to say, hey, we've, we've done the best we can. We don't have enough turf area to cover or enough, you know, planter beds to cover with 9,000 tons of mulch. We've done what we reasonably can. We've tried to avail ourselves to the other materials, but they're just not available. So again, I think the, the state is hearing some grumblings on that and, and I'm hopeful that as long as you do your level best to try to pick from the, the smorgasbord that the state's given you, and if there's only one thing on the menu, it was never intended to be your, your entire, you know, nutritional supplement, so to speak. So again, i- i- it's a difficult question to answer and, and I think the state didn't anticipate all of the market difficulties, but that's why they're making the city responsible for procurement. They want you to help develop the markets.
Right. So we're basically subsidizing the market. So, but then, um, what I hear you saying is that the plan really isn't to distribute. The plan is for the city as a, as an entity to use the materials, not to distribute them to either businesses or...
Well, they, they can be giveaways to residents or there's a number of ways to do it, but you bring up a good point that 9,000 tons is, is an awful lot.
Yeah.
You know, per year to, to give away or utilize. So it's, it's meant to be a mix of a bunch of different materials to help develop those markets. There just may be a little sync up challenge between the markets being ready when the procurement mandate hits.
Can we fill potholes with the compost? Can we do that? All right. Anyway, I have no further questions. So, yeah, oh, Ms. F. Orque, yes, do you wish to, uh, supplement what was said? Of course.
Yes. So, um, about the procurement, it is correct. We are being asked to buy things that we don't even know where we're gonna use it. It's around $200,000 a year approximately we might spend on procurement. So our short-term goal, at least until we figure out and see which market is, oh, you know, it's there, is to either our vendors, service providers, we can take credit as a city. So is there anyone else that's already doing business with the city or within the city so that if they're using RNG, if they're buying mulch, we can take credit? So that allows us to show CalRecycle that we're making progress because they know this is going to be very difficult for any city to make it happen. So they're gonna, we're gonna work with them. We already have a good partnership and collaboration with CalRecycle, the same thing with Sanitary District, a lot of collaboration on education and outreach. We have to have consistent messaging because Sanitary District cannot say one thing, different coloring versus ours, because there's going to be a big need for behavioral change. At the moment, we're not sorting our trash. So this is going to be a, a big undertake, but we're trying to leverage existing work, existing partnerships and build on it and then work with, uh, CalRecycle, the state, to guide us, um, to fill in the gaps. That's what I had. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that, uh, response. So I don't see anyone else. So now we are going to open up the matter to public comment. Is anybody from the public in the chambers who wishes to speak? No. Anybody on Zoom who wishes to speak?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I'll close public comment and I will entertain a motion right now. And so it looks like first up is Councilmember Chavez to make a motion and then, um, Councilmember Marta second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce the first reading by title only for the new ordinance, approve the new non-exclusive solid waste hauler franchise agreement and authorize appropriation of $175,000 for fiscal year 21, '22.
Second.
Wonderful. Do you wish to, uh, speak to the motion?
Thank you, staff, for the great presentation. I understand it's a mandate, so we have to do our best to accommodate it, but I appreciate the effort you have put in and the diligence you've done for our community.
Does the second have anything to add? Good. The only thing I'll say before we vote is we, I noticed we have on calendar, October 22nd, we have our meeting with the districts. This could be a good thing for the agenda for that. If not this time, then the next time, but I think we may not have another one in 2021. So we should put this on our agenda, okay? All right, let's call for the question.
Councilmember Gamaros, please.
My, my computer crashed, so I'll say yes.
Oh, no, okay. Let me get this.
Councilmember Gamaros verbally says yes.
I can do it. There you go. Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, everyone. So now we're going to move to new business item number one. Before we do, are we good to go to push through? Is everybody okay?
Yeah.
Everybody thumbs up? So now we have new business item number one. Madam Clerk, you...
Excuse me for interrupting.
Yes, of course.
Did, um, did the council's action include approving the franchise agreement and authorizing the appropriation?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, City Attorney. So, um, will you please read the title, Madam Clerk?
This is adopt a resolution in support of the implementation of the early childhood policy framework by the Costa Mesa Early Childhood Coalition. Presentation by Mr. Gonzalez.
Yeah, he's got it.
Good, all right. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Alex Gonzalez and I am the Chief of Staff to City Council. Tonight, we are bringing forward for your consideration a resolution in support of the implementation of the early childhood policy framework by the Costa Mesa Early Childhood Coalition. It is my pleasure to welcome Sandy Avzarodell, whom is joining us via Zoom from the coalition. I will turn it over to Ms. Avzarodell for a special presentation on tonight's resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Ms. Avzarodell, you have the floor.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor and City Council members and staff and citizens of Costa Mesa. Thank you for having me. I'm Sandy Avzarodell and I have the great, uh, pleasure and honor to facilitate the, uh, Costa Mesa Early Childhood Coalition. And I believe we have a PowerPoint presentation, uh...
Yes, the, the first slide of that is up, the one that says, "Vision: All Costa Mesa Children and Families Thrive."
Right, thank you. So we have, uh, we created this, uh, early childhood coalition in Costa Mesa in January of 2019. And I would like to personally thank Mayor Stevens and Councilmember Reynolds for, uh, their public will and commitment to, uh, the Costa Mesa Early Childhood Coalition. Through, uh, this coalition, we have come up with the vision that all Costa Mesa children and families thrive. And we do that, uh, by ensuring quality early learning, promoting comprehensive health and development, uh, and cultivating resilient families through, uh, collaboration across Costa Mesa. So next slide, please. The Costa Mesa Early Childhood Coalition is comprised of, uh, the City of Costa Mesa, the Melinda Hope Smith Center for Healthy Living, the Newport Mesa Unified School District, Early Childhood OC, and parents and concerned citizens of Costa Mesa. We have been meeting monthly since January of 2019. And what we do is prioritize funding policies and programs to support the youngest citizens of the City of Costa Mesa based on the early childhood policy framework. This was established again in 2019 and we, the reason why we are doing this is because we know that investing in the first years of life provide the greatest return on investments, both socially and economically, and have lifetime impacts. Next slide, please. How we do this, uh, one is to utilize the early childhood policy framework, which is a county-wide, uh, policy framework that was developed in 2018, uh, from about 40 different collaborative organizations across sectors. Uh, and so we, the Early Childhood OC is promoting that early childhood policy framework, again, across sectors, uh, and we are using that in the coalition to guide our work. We also utilize the building blocks for an early learning community to assess our progress. And the four building blocks of that, uh, national, um, uh, guide is, uh, community leadership, commitment and public will, quality services that work for all young children and their families, neighborhoods where families can thrive, and policies that support and are responsive to families. And through our strategic planning process, uh, that is what we were, are working towards. And I'm happy to say that, uh, the community leadership, commitment and public will is, uh, well-established in Costa Mesa for prioritizing early childhood. We also utilize the early development index data, uh, that is, uh, collected by First Five Orange County and, uh, minus the pandemic years, uh, we collect this data with all kindergartners every three years. And, uh, we utilize that data to inform our decisions and, uh, identify the neighborhoods that we would like to target to support, uh, those that are the most vulnerable. And we also use, utilize that data to look at it, uh, citywide and, uh, identify the domains, uh, that are the most vulnerable in terms of development. Next slide, please. So we have developed a strategic plan, uh, with goals, objectives, activities and outcomes. And, uh, you can see there, there are five goals that we have developed over these last two years. And, uh, they follow along with the, uh, building blocks for success for an early learning community as well as the early childhood policy framework. And they are to increase community awareness and commitment to prioritizing early childhood, to create public spaces that are safe and rich learning environments, to ensure families with young children have increased access to community resources that increase resilience, promote policies to support optimal early childhood development, and increase funding collaborative partnerships to ensure sustainability of the coalition. Next slide, please. And happy to say, again, going back to that, uh, public will and commitment, uh, the Melinda Hope Smith Center for Healthy Living, Newport Mesa Unified School District and the City of Costa Mesa, hopefully after tonight, um, we'll have adopted resolutions, uh, acknowledging early cha, the Costa Mesa Early Childhood Coalition as an organization that is working to, uh, help all in Costa Mesa prioritize early childhood and the benefits that come with that. I have included, uh, four different handouts for you, uh, for tonight that give you a little bit more information. Uh, this was, these, uh, were developed through the coalition. We have our case for investment, which gives some more history, uh, more data on, uh, why it's important to invest in, in specifically in Costa Mesa. Uh, I have given you a copy of the early childhood policy framework as well as the building blocks for early learning communities and a one pager on the 2019 early development index data, um, specific for Costa Mesa. And, uh, again, because of pandemic, pandemic, we have not, uh, redone the EDI data, so, uh, 2019 is the latest data that we have. So any questions?
Any questions from council? I, I don't see any in the queue. I don't remember getting those handouts, though. Did we get, we get the handouts?
No, Mayor, they will be distributed to you.
Oh, okay. Um, does somebody here, if, if any... Okay, Don, can you just request? Yeah, just request it. I'll, I'll give you the floor. There you go. All right. Uh, Councilmember Harper has the floor.
Questions about, um, like the early, uh, childhood coalition, is that a public agency, a private agency? Who funds it? How many people involved? And then give it, can you give me some, some simple example?
Here, um, I'll put it on discussion mode. You can...
Better? Can you give us a couple examples, just what, what your organization has done, your simple examples to, to, uh, to help with early child, early, early child, uh, development? And like John, I don't have the handouts either, so I think we're maybe missing a piece here, so I, I, we apologize.
Yeah, so, um, good questions. Uh, the coalition, uh, is made up of the three pillar agencies, which are, uh, we have our two, our mayor and councilmember Reynolds, who sit on that for the City of Costa Mesa. We have, uh, the director of the Melinda Hope Smith Center for Healthy Living, the Newport Mesa Unified School District. We have, uh, two, uh, board members that sit on it and, and then myself, uh, the director of Early Childhood OC, as well as citizens of Costa Mesa that make up the coalition. Uh, it is, uh, unfunded, other than, uh, Early Childhood OC is facilitating the work that we've been doing for the last, uh, two and a half years. And, uh, through our strategic plan, and I, I did not give you a copy of the strategic, strategic plan, which I can, uh, shows the activities that we're working on and the outcomes for each, uh, of those goals that we set. So one of the things that we have done, uh, is we showed and, and Councilmember Reynolds helped me out with the, the name of it, um, No Small Matter, uh, at the library and had over a hundred attendees there and a question and answer that, uh, the mayor, uh, was part of that, the panelists there. Um, we have, are working on, um, installing little free libraries across, across Costa Mesa, uh, based on the EDI index and where there are no, uh, little free libraries. There have been some more grassroots, uh, activities going on that I think Councilmember Reynolds could, um, speak to a little bit about that. Uh, but these last two and a half years have really been about that first building block, which is, uh, the community leadership, commitment and public will and educating on the importance of investing in early childhood. So lots more work to do, but, uh, we've, we've made good progress so far.
And Councilmember, let me say, it's like, so a- as Sandy said, we started really meeting in the, at the beginning of 2019. We had that screening in October of 2019. We had all kinds of things we wanted to do, but then we had the pandemic, so we've really been, uh, it's really, it's, it's, that has really, um...
Interrupted.
...interrupted all the things that we had planned to do.
I see.
And that's why we would have be, we would be here a lot earlier too, if not for the pandemic.
Yeah, you're not just not doing anything. I pre, I appreciate you saying that. So it's, it's not as, it doesn't seem as slow as, as it appears, but how, how do I know I'm not ready for kindergarten? Can you guys tell me that? Which I, which I wasn't, but I don't know.
I'm not sure they could, I'm not sure they could talk about you specifically.
That's what I'm asking for.
Sandy can a, answer that question, I'm sure.
Yeah, so, uh, the early development index, uh, is, has, looks at five developmental domains and they put all that, uh, put those domains together and kind of, um, uh, assess in vulnerabilities. So, um, ready, uh, not, not ready and, you know, almost ready type of a thing. And the one-page handout will, will show you exactly the, the domains that they, they look at. Um, this is all, it's actually, uh, done internationally and, uh, all valid and reliable data. But in terms of the question of kindergarten readiness, uh, you know, that, that is something that has been researched for, um, years and years. And really kindergarten readiness is, uh, ready, ready, ready students, ready families, ready schools, ready communities. And, uh, that looks different with every child, every family, every school and every community. So it's, it's a really, uh, ambiguous thing to be able to identify, uh, but we do our best looking at, uh, those five developmental domains to, uh, to see, you know, where kids are falling. Uh, we do know that when kids come in and are behind, uh, it's really difficult to catch up because of the brain development that occurs between, uh, birth and, and five years of age. So when they enter school at five, uh, and they aren't quite ready, uh, it takes a lot more time, a lot more effort and a lot more energy to, um, to build those skills than it would if they came in ready.
So I failed before I hit five, is, is the point? I mean, it's possible. I, I did. You seem, you seem to have rallied. You know, it's, uh, it, it, the other thing too is it's really amazing the statistics that the school district has and they break down kindergarten readiness and all these different categories for each school in the district. What's an example of, is it, I don't know my colors or ABCs or what?
Like reading readiness, socialization, being able to, being able to resolve conflicts, all kinds of things. There's about six different categories.
But measuring them is very difficult. That's what I'm hearing, too, and trying to identify who the problem child is and who is, I'd say that the wrong way, but.
Anyway, Sandy, I didn't mean to step on you. You were gonna ask.
That was helpful.
Oh, no, 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 that's, that's fine. So the five domains are physical health and well, and well-being, social competence, emotional maturity, language and cognitive development, general knowledge and communication. And then those five domains are broken up, so there are actually 16 different subcategories underneath. So, and how it's assessed using this Early Development Index is the kindergarten teachers actually complete a form. It's not a direct assessment, it's not with the child, it's based on their recollection of how the child came into kindergarten. And they, they fill out these forms for each child in January, February, March of that school year. And so, and it is all valid and reliable, it's been, it's been tested, and the, it comes out to be about 95% accurate in terms of their, their readiness. So we look at not ready, somewhat ready, and ready. And you'll see on that one pager, when you get it, the percentages of kids in Costa Mesa that are ready for kindergarten. The areas that countywide, as well as in Costa Mesa, that we really need improvement in is communication skills and general knowledge, gross and fine motor skills, pro-social and helping behavior, and overall social competence.
Sandy, Sandy, is your organization gonna try and catch it before they get to kindergarten or after? And supplement, catch it before and then, okay.
Yes.
Not gonna supplement after. I'm still trying to fix myself, Susan.
Yeah, we're trying to work, build resilient families, ensure they have quality early learning opportunities, and ensure they have confidence in health and development. So trying to catch developmental delays early, supporting families to, to make good choices for their children, to make sure they have healthcare, to make sure they have housing, you know, all of those pieces that set the stage for that child's life.
All right, Sandy, thank you. I certainly support what you're doing, so thank you for the time.
Thank you. Good questions. Thank you for drawing out the information.
And if I may briefly, Mr. Mayor, I have forwarded the handouts to all of city council.
Thank you. So does anyone else have any, anything that they wish to add? We're on, we're on discussion mode. Okay, so then we're done with questions, now we're gonna open it up to the public. There's literally no one from the public in the chamber, so I'm not even gonna ask the question. Anybody on Zoom?
I do have members of the public on Zoom, but none wish to speak.
None wish to speak. Well, you're all, I'm all very pleased that you're there on Zoom. And so I will entertain, entertain a motion. By council, council member Reynolds?
I'm hitting the button.
You're hitting the button. You could just make, you wanna make the motion? Okay. Okay, a motion by, motion by council member Reynolds, and then I seconded it. Council member Reynolds, you have the floor to support your motion.
I'll just shout here. That council adopt a resolution in support of the implementation of the Early Childhood Policy Framework by the Costa Mesa Early Childhood Coalition.
Second. Okay. Do you wish to say anything in support of your motion?
I do. I'll expand a little bit. First, I want to thank Sandy for that presentation and for her leadership over the last few years in really bringing this coalition together. I think we actually started in someone's living room with this coalition, with some, some parents in our community who were particularly eager to work on early childhood education, recognizing the value that it brings, not just to children and families, but really to our community. Council member Harper's comments reminded me of a quote that I thought of a lot in the early years of this coalition, and that's, I think it's a Frederick Douglass quote, "It's easier to build strong children than to repair broken men." So we'll, you know, and we've been spending a lot of time in our, on our council, dealing with sort of the symptoms of, of a, you know, challenges in our community. We've, we pour tons of money into homelessness, we're dealing with, you know, major issues with people who have become addicted to drugs. And so what I love about the Early Childhood Coalition is saying, like, let's go to the start and really try to make sure that all children in our community have a really strong start. It's, it's better for our community overall, it's very cost efficient as well. And one of the stats that stood out to me in some of the reading I've done on early childhood is a studies that, this is a common stat, every $1 invested in early childhood yields $7 in long-term benefits to society. So lots of, lots of good reasons to support early childhood. One of my first thoughts is, isn't this a school thing? Why should the city be involved? And, and so I just wanted to comment on that a little bit, too. You heard Sandy in her presentation talk about some of the goals of early childhood and the strategies to create a more robust early childhood, and one of that is, is really focusing on the environment that our children grow up in. So our focus on parks, creating safe neighborhoods, stable housing, and enriching park spaces and public spaces for people to connect and develop those social skills is, is all stuff that the city controls and that we can do to benefit children and families in our community. So I'm really excited about this resolution, I'm really happy about the work that this coalition is doing, and will be excited to bring sort of real projects and ideas forward in the future.
Thanks. I second everything that she said, including her motion, and I support this. I want to say just, it is, it is hard at times, but definitely fun and very rewarding to raise strong children. And, and it's, it's not, it's not something typically you're taught in school, you should be, but you're not, how to deal with a little baby that you bring home, or even a baby that you have even before they're born, how do you enrich them and stimulate them so that you put them on the right path? But those decisions that you make and how you treat your child in the very first year, second year, when they're really developing their brain and learning how to learn and, and developing language and these things, if they don't happen at that level, then it's difficult for those children to catch up. And, and not only that, there's the stimulation side, but then there's always also the avoidance of trauma in, in life. And so many of our kids now have trauma. And to council member Reynolds' point, why are we involved? And there are so many things that we talk about every meeting, that decisions that we make and things that our staff does either contribute to relieving or creating trauma in children. For example, we talk so much about housing. My parents grew up during the depression, and they didn't know where they were gonna live from day to day. They, during their childhood, they lost their house two or three times. Their parents were out of work. It affected them as children, and they still remember it. My mom's 96 years old, and she's still affected by that. My dad, when he died, he was still affected by that. So these are the things that if we put childhood development at the forefront of our thinking and cuts through all of our policy decisions, we're gonna have a stronger, more resilient community, not just today, but for years to come. And then there's a, it's a, we talk about, you know, when, when we broke up and we did our strategy session, we put Jason Minter with the safety group, we put him with the chiefs. And there's a reason for that, because there's a direct connection with the work that he does with recreation and the work that the police chief does. So if we get to our youth at the right time and we put them on the right path, then they're not gonna encounter the chief and NRPD. One of the things that, the statistics that just really strikes me is when the state of California, or any state actually, is deciding how much, many prisons do we need in the future, they look to third grade reading skills, three, third grade reading levels. And if the third grade reading level is low, they can predict that we're gonna need more prisons, start building prisons. So the way to reduce incarceration, keep our community safe, is to increase reading levels. And the way to do that is to get the children, when they're born, to the time they're five, and get them on the right path. So I support this. I'm really pleased that it's gone forward, and I hope that everybody votes for it. Let's call for the question, unless somebody else has anything to say. Let's call for the question.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, council. So we're up to new business item number two.
Thank you. This is award public works agreement with All American Asphalt for Randolph Avenue and St. Clair Street Improvement Project, City Project Number 21-07, presentation by Mr. Seth Raman, Public Services Director.
Mr. Seth Raman, you have the floor.
Mr. Mayor and members of city council, so this is project, this project has been in the works for a long time, and I'm happy to bring it forward for your approval. It's for Randolph Avenue and St. Clair Improvements, and this project includes parkway improvements, street rehabilitation, roundabout, signing and striping, and traffic calming on Randolph and also on St. Clair. And, and the limits on Randolph for Bristol to Baker and along St. Clair, it's, it's from, from Randolph to the cul-de-sac end. More importantly, the project adds 77 on-street parking spaces in the median, in a much needed area. So unless you have any questions, we can go through another presentation of PowerPoint, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Do any council members have any questions regarding this item? I don't see any in the queue.
I have one question.
Oh, yeah. We're on discussion mode. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. My question is about the landscaping. So we talked in our strategy session, I guess we haven't sort of formally voted on and endorsed some of our new strategies, but we talked about updating the plant palette and landscaping, sort of rules and regulations to be as drought tolerant as possible, and I'm assuming you's California natives. How do we make sure that that happens with this project? Because I think the language in these contracts are to sort of comply with current rules and ordinances and regulations related to city landscaping.
So Mr. Mayor, council member Reynolds, at this point, this project is, does not have significant landscaping. The roundabout will have some landscaping in the future, and, and that will be drought tolerant. We, even though it's not spelled out, we have embraced drought tolerant and native landscaping wherever it makes sense. So we'll make sure that the project complies with that.
Okay. Thank you.
Do any other council members have any questions? Okay, let's open it up to the public. Once again, no one has commented since the last item into the chambers, so there's no one in the chambers to speak. Does anyone on the Zoom link wish to speak to this matter?
Yes, Mr. Martinez, please.
Mr. Martinez, you have the floor.
Hello, yes. So I just wanted to comment and say that this, it looks like a really good project. I see raised crosswalks, I see bulbous, I see a roundabout. This all looks amazing, and I'm really liking it. And I hope that we can do a lot more stuff like this in the future. I know we're doing a roundabout project on Meyer, so I really looking forward to the city's, I guess, second permanent roundabout with this project. I guess my only qualm with this project would be the, there's a lot of parking, but at this point, I'm just gonna deal with it, even though there's a lot of, I hear breweries in the area, not that I can drink, but I don't know if we should be encouraging driving to a place where there are a lot, where there's a lot of alcohol. But, you know, c'est la vie. I'm just gonna take what I can get with the bulbous, the roundabouts, and the raised crosswalk and ask for more stuff like this in Costa Mesa. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else from Zoom wish to be heard on this? Okay, so we'll close public comment, and we have a motion by council member Mar, second by council member Harland. Please state your motion. Sorry, Mayor Protam Mar.
I will move to approve the staff recommendation.
I'll second.
Okay, Mayor Protam, do you wish to say anything in support of your motion?
Just quickly, Rajah, you got Mr. Martinez to support the project. I mean, this is, yeah, we're getting there, right? No, this is exciting. And there's been a bunch of talk on Randolph for the entire time I've been elected about what we can do. Yes, there are breweries there, there's also restaurants, there's also a gym, it's a very busy, happening, fun part of town. And so we want to encourage people to be able to go there. Because it's sandwiched between the camp, Bristol, and Baker, there's really no alternative. You can't just park further away. It's, you, if you can't find a spot, you just leave. So doing whatever we can to continue to support those businesses. And then also, I think this will just generally actually help with traffic calming, because the street will be narrower, the turnout at, on St. Clair is something that when we stood out there with our, Rajah had like a giant description of the project on a board a couple of years ago, and every single business owner walked up and said, hey, that's really cool, I'm excited about that, when are you gonna do that? So we're finally doing that, congratulations, can't wait to see it done, and can't wait to share it with the business owners, too, because I know they'll be very happy. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Harland, do you have anything to say?
No, Mayor Protam Mar covered it all.
All right, well done. Yeah, it's great to have this moving forward, it's been a long time, and the residents really appreciate it. It's gonna be a great improvement. Thank you for the work. Another great project. All right, so let's call for the question.
Mayor Stevens, please.
Oh, I chose that I voted.
Motion carries seven zero. And the next item is award public works agreement with urban professional builders for fire station number three improvements and repairs, City Project Number 21-06, presentation by Mr. Seth Raman.
Sir, you have the floor again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this fire station number three, we have, it's on Park Avenue, right by the Lions Park Projects. We had issues in the past, and anytime it drains significantly, we have issues with the water drainage. Some of them is through the roof, roof, but also we have, the grading in that area has to be adjusted to make the water go away from the building. So, so this project is to conduct all those repairs, we will, grading of the soil away from the fire station, adding more drainage pipes, and then conducting roof repairs, drain spouts. So this will be a nice needed project for fire station number three. So if you have any other questions, I'll be happy to answer, along with Mr. Sung Yang, who is also here.
Do any council members have any questions? No?
I do.
Oh.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Just quickly, Mr. Seth Raman, so drainage improvements, are any of these potentially gonna be what we call green infrastructure or things that relate to, you know, natural ways to manage stormwater? I just think that this is a very prominent location, we're already doing it with Lions Park, I just know if we could capitalize on this as an opportunity as well.
So, Mr. Mayor, council member Harland, at this point, this project does not propose any new collection of stormwater. This is, this is more addressing the existing water that, that drains towards the building, and we're trying to get this flow away from the building, and it goes to the same system that's, that's out there today. But there is a, all this stormwater actually goes into another collection, which is not too far from here, which is on Anaheim Avenue. So it does go to, to that storage and gets collected there.
Okay. So practically, that might work. I just, and I think I have some colleagues who share this opinion, to the extent that we can, you know, use our, our city infrastructure to show people better ways of doing things, it would be great. If it doesn't happen here, that's perfectly fine, but I just want to continue that, that dialogue to make sure that as we have sustainability as a, you know, a goal, we try and bring it up at every occasion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? All right, then, oh, I'm sorry, council member Mar? Sorry, Mayor Protam Mar.
Yeah, real quick, what was the amount in our CIP for fire station three? What did we set aside for it originally in the budget?
Do you have that information?
I was trying to pull it up, but I couldn't do it fast enough.
It, it was, it was set aside in a couple of different fiscal years, this fiscal year and the previous fiscal year. And I think the total kind adds up to And I think the total kind adds up to approximately that number.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay.
I've got one question. Thanks. So I appreciate council member Harland's comment about the landscaping. 100% agree. I think we should be, you know, every, every opportunity, even if it's small, to, again, be as sustainable as possible, sort of capture water to, to support existing landscaping. I thought this, based on the location, too, might also be a really nice place for elevating our arts and culture activities as well. And I know it's difficult to change scopes, but I, I'm curious, is this is our oldest fire station? No, I guess it's third oldest, it's number three, right? Well, it's in our downtown area. It's an old fire station. I know it needs a lot of support. But I, I'd love to sort of think about whether we would have some contingency funds at the end. But to be, and maybe task our Arts and Culture Committee with thinking about a way to infuse some, some art, maybe some history or storytelling related to the fire station, just to sort of throw some ideas out there. You know, we, of course, we have sculptures as ideas. Sometime in the last one to three years, someone brought up the idea of like quotes on sidewalks. So if we're repaving the sidewalk, maybe a, a nice quote there. But I, I think this is a good opportunity to, to get some of the kind of community engagement stuff into the infrastructure as well. I guess that wasn't a question, was it?
Okay.
Can we get some of that into it as well?
Put a question mark at the end. You wanna, you wanna respond to that?
Mr. Mayor, at this point, we'll see how the project progresses. And if there is funds available, we'll engage our cultural arts committee and our fire station, or fire department also on any opportunities like that.
Good answer. Okay, so do any other council members wish to say anything regarding this question, question staff? No? Okay, then it will open up to public comment. Again, no one has come into chambers, so there's nobody in the chambers. Does anybody on Zoom wish to talk about this item?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I'll close public comment and entertain a motion. Motion by council member Chavez, seconded by council member Reynolds. Go ahead and state your motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve staff recommendation.
Second.
Okay, so that's a very good and clear motion. So let's, and do you, do you wish to say anything?
Real, real briefly, Mayor, if you permit, I think it's important for us to understand that our first responders are the ones that always are there taking care of us in Costa Mesa. So anything we do to repay the favor and make sure that the best facilities possible is a good thing, in my opinion.
Thank you. Council member Reynolds, do you have anything to say?
No, glad to see this project move forward.
Okay, terrific. Does any other council members wish to be heard? Wonderful, let's call for the question.